Thank you. The integrity of neighborhoods as places designated by our zoning powers to be where homeowners or long-term tenants live. How did we get to the need for this action? B and Bs were a vital part of that successful community character in the day when people who've gotten that business were residents. Part of the community loved it, wanted to contribute to its unique character. People using their property to host visitors and providing a service that benefited the rest of the community. They were by and large superintendent owners who served as hosts, house servants, concierges, history storytellers, all in the service to the community, making Fredericksburg, visiting Fredericksburg a terrific experience and an economic booster for so many other businesses here. But things changed. They changed quickly and they caught us off guard. Market circumstances in the housing market plus the pandemic that made STRs more appealing than hotels, created a force that flung open the doors for others to get into business who didn't have the same objective. Without that commitment to contribute uniquely to Fredericksburg's strengths. And that's why we're here today. We are to acknowledge the reality of our present condition and fashion and ordinance to be only as tight as necessary to honor the value we've always had. To keep the integrity of our neighborhoods as places where homeowners and long-term tenants and those owner occupied STRs contribute to the quality of life in Fredericksburg. We can't solve all the problems, that's not our task. But we can provide clarity in a tight ordinance regulating STRs in our residential zones. The previous council did a really good job slowing the spread in R1. The main task for us today are twofold, one, to consider whether to expand that protection to the other residential zones. And two, to work on coming up with an easy to interpret and enforceable ordinance that controls the potential negative effects of the STR industry and residential zones. There's a third task for the council to take out, but not today. And that is to determine what if anything we can do to pull back properties that were intended to provide housing for residents of Fredericksburg. My presentation and our work on the STR for STR Task Force was guided by my principle that I delivered to them, which is what I just described to you about neighborhoods. The ordinance should go no further than what is helpful to our necessary charge to governing well. It should go no further than that which we can reasonably assume will always have the capacity to enforce. It should go no further than what staff can easily interpret and serve our clients by confidently explaining. And it should go no further than to provide P and Z with clarity about what serves the goal. The goal is fiercely protecting that character of our community that has made us so successful and desirable place for a hundred and seventy-seven years. I want to thank you for being here, P and Z, thank you council, thank you staff for all the work that you've done to prepare us for today. Way I'd like to run the meeting is that if you have something to add to say in our discussion that you might not be recognized, just pop that. You, you people are well acquainted with how to do this and where we're trying to go with this. The, you have some pass out here that will a handout here that will direct the conversations that we hope to get to and leave here that today feel like we're really a couple second. But we may not get it all done today, that's okay. Thank you for your commitment to Fredericksburg. I know some of you sat on P and C or other parts of city government for a long time, a lot longer than me. And you have a great perspective about the things that I just described. Um, where do we go next, Mr. Bailey? Is this the time they need to step away?
Can we get a legal thing on?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Once a conflict of interest has been declared, that individual is not permitted to participate in deliberation, has nothing to do with voting, just sitting and listening. Uh, they're required to step away from the, the dais and from the table. So we'd ask that they do that now. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, P and Z, at this point, we would like to work through our, our presentation that you have a copy of, uh, the presentation will be given by city staff. Again, as the mayor mentioned, as we're working through this, if you have any questions or comments along the way, um, feel free to speak up and provide your input. This is meant to be a a very informal, relaxed setting. As the mayor mentioned, um, a lot of issues to work through today. If we get stuck on something and can't make the final decision, that's okay. And we've been working on this for a long time. I know that everyone at this table has their own idea about what the end point should look like. Uh, some of those opinions differ. So again, I think that, that healthy discussion is what we're looking for today, uh, to arrive, uh, at, at a better place moving forward. So we're looking for staff, we're looking for direction from each group again, as, as a result of this, this presentation. Uh, so that we can make those adjustments and, and potentially come back for another joint meeting to discuss those again. We'll talk about the schedule a little bit more as we go through the presentation, but at this point I'd like to hand it over to our interim development purposes director, Anna Hudson, and our assistant city manager, Garrett Bond. You sure to speak up, please.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, I think the mayor did an excellent job. Uh, just setting the stage for this, talking about the priorities and goals of this meeting, but we have put together a short presentation for you. Um, the mayor has selected a number of slides from the STR Task Force presentation, uh, that he gave to the city council on March seventh. So we'll start with those and then Anna will follow up with some city, city staff updates. Just give you some updates on STR applications and enforcement efforts. Um, and then we, we'd just like to open it up for general discussion. I'll provide a little more detail on the, this handout that's in front of you, but that basically lays out the recommendations from the task force. We've also added some city, uh, city staff comments. And then there's some general just issues at the bottom we'd also like to discuss. So uh, with that, I will turn it over to Anna and she can go through the, I'm sorry, turn it over to the mayor first. So if you can, uh, jump to slide three.
The, uh, three primary objectives are listed there. Um, and that last one is the one I mentioned there is, is, uh, council work that is not will be done today. I'm certainly open to any of your recommendations, P and Z, uh, and staff about that. Cause it's obviously, um, the one that has the most met well, appears to me to have the most legal ramifications. Uh, we, for the integrity of the task force, to make sure that we didn't throw something at you that said, we all met and after we met, then we gathered and said, kumbaya, and we all agreed on everything. But we wanted you to know where the disagreements were, uh, among the task force members. So that's notated by those icons. Next. So, uh, the next slide just specified the particular recommendations that that I've made in the presentation, um, regarding the three big things, uh, two of which were going to be a top spread and, uh, enforced and mostly enforced today. Um, but you see that there was disagreement on imposing a specific time limit and suspension, uh, for accepting new permit applications. Um, the other word for that is moratorium and that's when, that's got, has some inflammation to it. So, um, but we were, my thought was if we just stop the process, it, it catches us up on the pending permits that came in before April first, uh, and this is from staff and things may have changed since, since we talked about this. And that, that they feel like that the workload is evened out better with dealing with permits, inspections, et cetera. And I'm open to their recommendation on this, uh, but this one is probably one of the most controversial things that we talked about was suspending it for a time period to, in order to catch up. Um, and if we were to do that, I'd recommend that we have very specific, we're suspending it for the following reasons, one, two, three, four. And that gives us our task. And then that way we know when we're done, whether it's sixty days, ninety, or a hundred and twenty, or whether there's just not an appetite for that among the elected leaders and our P and Z. Specify the prohibition of STRs in R3, which seems a lot, it was met agreement, which seems like, um, something that might be easy to do because R3, you know, is, um, part of our remove the cup option for properties in R1. I admit this is me, uh, because I thought we just shut the door completely on R1. Um, may not be advisable and, uh, the actions of the city with regard to SDR own. The actions of SDR owners, since the previous council passed the ordinance, has dried up in our law. Correct? Okay. So that may not be necessary to, that was for me to just to close the door completely. Um, but I know that there is reasoning about keeping that cup for those stranded properties that may still be advised. Declare as lapsed, also noted applications. This is also met with agreement. It just puts a time limit on those people who might've just gotten their application and thinking, well, someday I may want to sell, I want, may want to operate an SDR or want to sell as a SDR. You see the, um, specifics there about, um, what I recommended, uh, to the task force and that they dealt with and came to agree on empowering effective code enforcement. Um, a lot of this has already happened, review of, of enforcement procedures. Clarify which will go to Munich Court, which go to the new district adjudication process, which is a faster track for disposition of these violations. Um, acquire creative central software, which is on track, right? That's being done. Uh, you know, we had this grandest issue that we won't rehearse now, but, uh, that sets back. Uh, staff did a great job of trying to wrench every drop of meaning out of that until finally we just have to move on. Install a hotline with complaints and require a street view photo on advertising. This came from specifically Tammy Smith, who's in the business, Tammy here, yeah. Uh, and would you mind just stepping up and saying what your rationale for that was? The street view? Yeah, come on. I just want you to couple of sentences state your rationale for why you thought that was an important thing.
Sorry, I was looking down at my phone as I stacked.
The street view photo?
The street view, oh, when I was going through the, um, trying to find illegal, um, SDRs. Some of them, uh, there was eight, seven or eight on my list that I'm, I have no idea where they are. Um, and so unless we have that street view photo, I don't think we can, if code enforcement is going to be looking online, you don't remember where they are, they could be hiding. You know, cause I, and Savannah found one and it's been taken down, but we for sure know with the hopes of the press, which it'd be legal to do it there. And so it, uh, it was only showing interior pictures, so we couldn't tell which house it was.
So it's a way for staff to identify property for proper enforcement? Okay, thank you. Excellent. And mayor, you can make that into a requirement for public safety. So that fire E and S would be able to identify the front of the house that is suffering. Go ahead. We talked quite a bit about the meaningful financial unreplication penalties, uh, for SDR violators. I think what I've heard since, uh, we've talked about this meeting is, correct me if I'm wrong, any staff, that the zoning ordinance already establishes a fine schedule for certain things, noise, trash, lighting, et cetera. And my recommendation now is that we follow that. That we not create a whole new, uh, system of fines for those violations. Now that's different from revocation. That's different from what happens through the path of rep, re-revocation or suspension. You're looking like, you're looking at me like you have something on your mind, Dan.
Well, I think it's very important that we differentiate these to a degree.
Okay.
Because ordinary violations of other types of ordinances are different. These are things that people really have direct control over, and I think we need to make it hurt.
Okay, cool.
Badly hurt.
Excuse me. One of the cons to that pro is to, to, um, our legal capacity and Mick can tell us more about this. Our legal capacity to differentiate a property within the same zone.
Which is, we cannot do it, Nick?
Or do you remember? Well, in general, no, in general. And the reason is that the impact on the community of that violation or offense is identical, no matter who commits it.
Okay.
And so we would look at every item that you want to put into the ordinance and see if that stands. If there's any need or there's some interest uh, that's special to this type of operation, we would sure try to make it work. But in general, it's going to be the same ordinance because the impact on the community is the same.
So is there, is there a reason at this point, Tom, to take a look at all, look at all of them? Cause I don't know what they are. We don't know what they are. I mean, we can all look them up.
And staff, you have.
That's a sad question. I'm not looking for the answer today.
Is your question directed that perhaps we need to look at how effective our penalties are to enforce code so community wise? Okay.
Which, which would precipitate a review of all of the rights.
Okay. We'll put that in the hopper. Um, annual report from owners filed under oath, there's agreement about this, so that, uh, is this public? Would this be public if I operate an SDR, but it is what you reported as business, right? So to hot people to the state about hot tech, okay.
Paul, maybe?
I'm sorry.
So if you already have the Texas reporting, properties that pay in on hot funds, so state what.
Well, it is public information that is available.
The application and the inspection report would be public. It would be subject to the I'm sorry?
What about the current payment history and whether they're compliant with the, and paying their taxes on a quarterly basis as it should be? Or whether those are linked with?
I believe payment history would be public, would be subject to the Public Information Act as well.
I'm going to call Randy, would you come up here, uh? Yeah, and he's having trouble here, so I hope that's because.
I don't know.
Yeah. With regard to the annual file.
Yes.
You made a point during the task force that you all have to do that annually. Is that correct?
Right, so each quarter when we submit to, you know, where they assign, because Randy, this is more completed. I use a paper document and I have to sign under penalty that, that says this is an authentic and true fact. So that's, that's being done. So this would be an extension of that quarterly, an annual basis, definitely for my
But the idea was, of course, to make those people know they've got to report and, and it catches those who may want to stay under the wire. Reduce occupancy density to one guest per two hundred feet. This was, oh, on, online interactive maps, sorry. Uh, Tammy did some brilliant work on this, doing some, um, research about what other towns have built. We did discuss what kind of information you'd want with an interactive map because the point was made that such a high percentage of these STR owners are women. So to have an interactive map that shows the owner is such and such and so forth, that would just have to be worked out to be sensitive. But the idea was that any citizen could go to the city website and click in and there's a city map, uh, it's much like the red dot map we have, except it's much more extensive and has more information. And that again is public information because the application is we are operating this as an SDR, et cetera. And we, we didn't discuss specifically, did we Randy? The, the information that would, would appear on that? Remind me.
So the analogy I use is if you drive your vehicle to the store, license plate, you're asked to be simply get your media area to ensure who that is and what that is. So the same thought is we can use, um, use, use the permit number perhaps or the address or something like that, but not disclose names, numbers, emails, personal information.
But it does maybe have the local contact on it? Was that?
That's for conversation.
So that's to be worked on. And then to simplify the data about linking permits to property address. Um, this was another, the question mark there because I don't think we discussed it after days of laughing. And that was, uh, something that Tammy, um, am I right? Yeah, uh, because when she was doing all the research, um, there were several permits attached to one property. So we couldn't get a good number, how many SDRs we had. And it was, it was significant, wasn't it? Yeah, we, we was, it was hundreds, as I recall. Next.
Is that a bedroom or a house?
Yeah. There's a simple patient question. And, and I think that for Tammy's purposes, it should be a house for, for her trying to find out the data. And what would give us the data about how many there are and what are people and so forth. Because my, my, uh, my concern right now is we will look at, let's say at a hotel room. Okay, how many hotel rooms? When we talk about hotel rooms, when we're talking about a bedroom that swings two people. Okay, so when people come to town, you know, where you might say we've got fourteen hundred hotel rooms and that swings twenty-eight hundred people. Okay, so when we have a B and B that might have four bedrooms in it and that's an eight, that's eight people, that'd be equivalent of what? Two hotel rooms?
If I may, the ordinance currently states that a short-term rental is a, a unit that is rented. A short-term rental unit is defined as a unit that is rented. Certain examples, it could be rooms within a residence, such as an SDR B and B. Or it could be an entire house, such as an SDR occupied. The intent is how you're using the space.
Right. Well, my, my concern right now is looking at how many places do we have for people to stay in our community when they come visit us? So this SDR might have, it might serve, uh, four people, it might serve ten people. You know, so this is one thing I think we as a, as a community need to know, how many visitors can we accommodate? Well, also Tom, I think from my perspective, what I was after with this was when things come before P and Z, if I'm applying to you for a, for a SDR. And your question is, how many people are you going to serve? That, that need means that I need to tell you the answer. I, well, I have two for better. It's my property will house as many. It also goes to the capacity issue, which
Well, that, that's the issue of the two hundred feet.
Yeah. And I, I understand that issue. I think we need to clarify that. Well, that was the point. Thank you for that. Um, all right, we, uh, the suggestion was made by some that we include specific SDR zones in the new comprehensive plan. That's not today's discussion. But, uh, that's an option to, to keep it from just uh, blooming everywhere. Um, and there again, we'd have to, we have to live with the reality we have. So that would be a new reality we had to work if we were to do that. Convene a task force for addressing, uh, this particular aspect of our housing challenge. That means how does STR in R1, R2 particularly impact our housing challenge? And is there a barrier there that we could meaningfully address? Consider incentivizing volunteer surrender of those permits. Tricky discussion, but, um, it was thrown out on the table to see if there's anything we could do. Uh, on the city initiative to, we'd like to get attorney, permit, and either become a long-term rental or put your mother-in-law in it or something.
So that's all agreed upon, but were there any specifics other than that would be a good idea?
I don't, was there a specific, Tammy, I'm looking at Tammy and Randy and Mike, uh, do y'all remember specific?
Yeah, there, there were two things and, and, um, we're council person present here, and I, you know, that I'll just won't put names out there anyway, but um, which I thought was a great idea. We have some, uh, police salary budget that hasn't been legalized. We have seven develops that are currently missing. Uh, so using some of those funds potentially to establish a relationship with the police officers regarding per v. law, but with an LPR relationship, so using, uh, that, and that is an opportunity. The other part I talked to was Scott Barrett, uh, with their municipal county. There's about a seven-point differential between residential and SDRs. So some of those folks may have gotten any permits, may be sitting on them. They're now being, uh, taxed at an FDR rate, at a much higher rate. They probably don't know that. Educate our, have a conversation with Scott that he is looking at and roll that, um, valid property definition back to pre-SDR status and save that individual homeowner hack one. So those two.
Would that be mostly STR permits that are not actively operating, probably? Cause if you're operating, you're going to make it that much.
Active or non-active?
Yeah.
So what do you do at that point? But, uh, I think education is needed, I'll pull those back.
Well, it's hard to market for the tax. Rollback to regular would be those who are not operating and would see the advantage. We, we assume that those people who are operating in SDR are making sufficient money for that not to be an appealing option. Uh, that was the only two opt in, um, uh, specifics mentioned was the potential of, oh, I can go back to the regular tax rate, um, with seven percent, whatever. Or, um, what was it?
Building a incentive program.
Building the, yeah, incentive program attached to budgeting.
That was my idea. I've looked at other cities where they have maybe, um, like in San Francisco, you run out for I think ninety days as an SDR and the rest of the year you have to operate in the long term. That sounds like an important nightmare, but just maybe more flexibility because right now it seems a bit counterintuitive. Probably to set up that you can, you know, not rent for ninety days and you lose your permit. That just seems backwards to me. Maybe there should be more.
Also wanted to note that an R1, uh, long-term rentals, uh, are, are not allowed under our ordinance currently.
Really?
Except for occasional use by guests and family. So that's a change that we had talked about.
For that's ADUs.
For that, for the ADU, I'm sorry, for the ADU. Which we have a lot of those, uh, if you look at the aerial, uh, all around town, a lot of STRs, ADUs uh, located in backyards.
So you're saying you have to change the order to make it the long-term then?
We would have to amend the ordinance to make that long-term use legal. That's correct.
Right now, there's a bill in the legislature that would allow all ADUs in every zoning category to become STRs without any say though.
Yeah, um, some of those are going to be in Austin tomorrow. Talk to the legislature about that.
Mayor, can I stop for just a second and ask one question because we're going to continue down to the bottom of the page. I have a question on the very third page of this, of Mr. King. Nick, what are other people doing about something that's equivalent to a moratorium?
Well, everything, anything you can think of, as far as I know, I mean.
Is it defensible? Can it be done?
Temporarily for purposes of studying your regulation and once the study is over, you should, within a reasonable time uh, in the moratorium.
Okay.
Now, I don't consider those to be a development moratorium under the statutes. Uh, they're just basically a temporary hold on or suspension of permits. So I really don't like to use the word moratorium because that has a legal meaning in the development moratorium world, but I think you could have a temporary period while you're studying your regulations without any legal liability.
Does that have a finite time before it goes from one to the other?
It's got to be reasonable.
Okay. That's a longer answer, I hate.
That's all I can say. That, that might be, that might be.
Too long?
No, that might be. It really should relate to how long it takes you to do your work to get some permanent rights.
Yes, thank you.
And if we were to do it, my recommendation would be to specify for the following reasons. So we know, yeah, where we're headed.
Yeah, we want to be, you want to be specific if you're going to suspend someone's ability to profit.
And we've all heard of check it.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Um, okay, and of course, the, uh, the other most, probably the most controversial in the task force and among the community is the transferability of permits acquired in R1 and, and R2 after the effective date of this amended ordinance. Whether we say these are now no longer transferable as a, I'm talking about a new, so we're not talking about previous to the passage of this ordinance amendment. Um, so everybody applies and knows those rules going in. We talked about, uh, non-transferability of permits for the existing, and you know all the issues of that races. Okay, um, so then I asked to, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because I'd rather go, I think they asked me for these slides on two views that have the opposing views and so forth. But if you, if you don't mind, I'd like to go right to what staff has prepared, um, because I want, we all want when we leave today for the staff to feel like we made some headway to help them as well as ourselves.
If, if it would be all right, mayor, I think it'd be good for Anna to touch on a few of the staff updates, just to, to provide you with general overall updates and then we'll get into the spreadsheet.
Thank you. Speak up for the room.
Good morning, mayor and council and P and Z members. Um, Gary, can I talk to you? Is this one on? No.
You have a soft voice.
Good morning, everyone. Um, all right, so we're looking for the new permits page. All right, so we're looking for the new permits page. Um. I think the good news is all the work that was done um for the twenty twenty two ordinance has paid off. Um, we have seen a significant reduction in the number of new permits. In fact, we've had eleven new permits approved. Since the April first adoption of twenty twenty two ordinance, so nearly a year, we've only had eleven new applications that have been approved. So the work to stop the spread in the R one has, the changes have have made a huge difference in what we're seeing in R one. Um, what we saw. Prior to leading up to the adoption of the twenty twenty two ordinance was that rush. We had about three hundred new permits that were applied for like in the month, month of March, a year ago. So the bad news is we're still catching up to some of those, those have mostly been processed, but we are um. Because of the software issues that we had with Granicus, um, processing all of those has taken a while. But what we can tell from the new permits, that we've only approved eleven. Seven of those were unoccupied, four of those were in R two, three of the four in R two required a conditional use permit, so P and Z and City Council approved those. Uh, two are allowed in C one and one in C two, so the commercial districts. We've seen three new S T R accessories in R one, and those are allowed by our right currently. Um, and we've seen one S T R B and B in R two. And so what staff, the day to day, what staff has been working on are a lot of renewals, a lot of renewals. Um. So the the ordinance is working, that's the good news. Um. Next slide. Um, since January one of this year, staff has issued three hundred and eight permits, and that's a mixture of renewals, transfers and new. And then this slide has a lot of numbers um kind of broken down by category, right? So the big difference in the twenty twenty two ordinance was the creation of these different types of S T Rs accessory. B and B condo, facility and unoccupied. And then we also have this large number of non-conforming, so essentially from the adoption of the twenty twenty two ordinance. Everything that existed now became non-conforming in R one, especially um in R two um. Because the rules changed, right? So those that were established can continue as non-conforming until they want to change something. Um. So those are, those are the big numbers that we're seeing and tracking.
Speak up anytime about questions or clarifications.
Where are you on the backlog?
July, pro- permits that have been issued since July is what we're working through now, hoping to get to August by the end of the week.
Wait, define now, but I'm sorry, so they were they were they expired in July? Of twenty twenty two, they submitted applications in July of twenty twenty two for renewals, these are only renewals. We're processing them new as they come in. So technically they're operating illegally because they don't have a use on it, so we're giving them grace, correct? How how are we able to approve that, like?
Based on when they submit, so if they submitted in March. Or if they submitted in July and they have just expired after we get the application, we're not gonna hold that against them. Because that's our our timeline, our process that's holding up the renewal, so.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit.
Well, currently, for example, in R one, for pending renewals, we have two hundred and sixty eight. And that's just R one. And then R two, we have a hundred and twenty eight pending renewals. C one, we have thirty five, C two, we have twelve, and C D D, we have forty eight.
And this is because. They software.
This is.
So this is. The the applicants got in on time, it's the city is following through, and it's just. It's just the backlog on the city then.
Yes, sir, and and as part of that problem, while we're reviewing, we have identified properties that that renewed within the required timeline.
Okay.
Properties that did not or have extensive violations, that's all part of the review process. So part of the review, you review them, see if there's still a compliance process for legal, but that's just the pending process.
And so the ones that are not compliant are the ones that are eligible now to have permits gained.
Correct, or their renewal was denied, depending on the level of.
But it just take, but but it's staff time that has to, that has to make that determination.
Yes, exactly.
And if you think about the three hundred and eight permits issued since January one. That puts us on track, right? So we're talking about a total of around twelve hundred. That's about as much as we can handle as far as renewals, right? Because they expire, they're they're not, they expire a year after they're issued. So we're constantly having to process renewals, since it's a yearly thing, an annual thing.
Um, but I guess, I don't know whether you've answered my question or not. Of the backlog that you started with, what number is that today as opposed to what it was when we started? Because I understand that that it's a continuing process, but are you getting ahead of the backlog or are we just moving the whole thing down? Down the line as you go along?
If you if you take the the renewals that we know are gonna come every month. Are we getting rid of the backlog that we had before?
On the panic, on the panic permits in March that you were talking about?
So I think to your point, that that's where we spent the majority of our time, is trying to get the new panic permits issued in a period. We appear to be on track with catching up, um, if we continue in the way that we're going, I'm pretty confident we'll get there. But it's, we really just started, so we transitioned to Granicus April first. We didn't have the ability to issue permits until early July. So we're just playing catch up with that, so now that we've had that in the, we want to put permits out.
Thank you.
So we lost April, May, June, July. Uh, uh, effective uh application for. Go ahead. Oh, oh, I I had a question. So you said. That we're now to July of twenty twenty two and hope to be just in August by the end of the week. So that's still quite a few months behind. Characterize the pace, is it picking up, is it, is it, um? Y'all agree it, so tell me, is it?
It's consistent, um, we're consistently reviewing, and each application where we will must be considered on a case by case basis. We're just kind of walking through what that looks like, we receive the application, or we verify election, we verify local contact information. We then have to do a local occupancy tax check, have they been compliant, are they going to move on, do they have violations? And we have to check for home enforcement violations. If all of that checked out and there's no issues, no inspection is required, we can approve a permit. But that process start to finish takes two days, three, by the time we get to our location. And then from there, if there's issues, we're just full disclosure, most of them have some type of discrepancy, change in ownership, local contact. Change, we have to contact those people, get the correct information. And that depending on the response time takes time, and then if that occurs, there is a need for inspection as well. And then you have to study the inspection of the property owner, so. I would say more than fifty percent require a significant amount of law.
Well, is anything in our discussion, anytime we're together, that would make a difference in that? Would speed it up or help or whatever, including a suspension, whatever, I hope you'll tell us. And also I want to brag on staff because they they've been working their. Very hard. It was just this flood that we got.
Like A I robots to help y'all.
To assist us in putting this a little better perspective, do you have an idea how many? Structures are in Fredericksburg that are in R one but are not in HOAs that strictly provides short term rentals? And same with R two ballparks, we realize what percentage of housing we've lost to that?
So are you looking for twenty twenty one numbers or twenty twenty two?
Whatever the most consider, most recent you have would be fine.
So as of twenty twenty two, when these numbers come from December of twenty twenty two, we had six hundred and six S T R properties in R one. Full disclosure, those are not all active, that is what we had applications on, we have started to process information in those numbers we have available. But the twenty twenty two numbers were like six hundred and six R one S T R properties.
Sure.
R two was two hundred and seventy, and again, these are properties, not units. And R three, there were three. I have the commercial numbers as well.
Now, how many R one homes do we have that are not in an H O A? Because like where I live, our H O A strictly forbids short term rentals.
I don't have those numbers, but I can tell you what we have as far as units in R one.
Anybody? That's a, that's a great question.
Uh, go ahead and give me the total numbers, and then I would be curious because it would up the percentage.
We showed six eighteen, six hundred and eighteen units in R one.
That's, oh, that's S T R units, when I, I'm talking total structures.
Oh, sorry, I don't. We did that today, like during, is that, and then you'll have, actually, sorry, different spreadsheet. So. So in twenty twenty one, R one identified three thousand seven hundred and eleven properties.
That's total?
Total. In R one, and R two identified eight hundred and ten. And R three was sixty eight.
How many in R three, please, ma'am?
Sixty, sixty eight, thank you.
So we can try and reduce or take out the. I mean, that's, you know, you're talking heritage and.
Yeah.
Things like that, but it still does, does impact the percentage of actual usable structures that are being included in S T Rs at this point.
And we have those percentage combinations as well.
Shoot him over.
R one, the percent of S T R properties is sixteen point eight. R two is thirty five. R three is four. And the commercial C one is twenty one. C two is eight. And the C D D is seventeen percent.
Shelby, of the renewals that you've been processing, have the applicants kept up with? The hot tax during the, since their permit expired?
Most of them, not all, which is why we do the hot check, so we remind that they haven't been compliant. There could be a number of reasons, perhaps they haven't been committed because their property's been under renovation, which happens. Um, some instances, the property owner is living there full time, which the ordinance rules up to here, and in other instances. They just run on compliance, um, and then that forces them to come into compliance to receive their permit.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, go on.
Next slide. And to that point, uh, we did hire a new S T R specialist in November of twenty twenty two. Um, because previously this was all falling on Shelby, who has a lot of other duties, so. Dan Mosgrove's in the audience, and she is doing a fabulous job, and no one's happier than than Shelby that she's around, but she's doing a great job. Uh, we also hired a new pot specialist, hotel occupancy specialist in the finance department. Also learning a lot, you know, trial by fire, uh, drinking from the water hose, but uh Darren's also doing a great job. And again, we've only had eleven new permits since the adoption of the twenty twenty two ordinance that have had to follow the new rules.
She has a soft voice.
Sorry, so they've only been eleven new permits since the adoption of the twenty twenty two ordinance, so those are the ones that are following the new rules. Um, but renewals and transfers do take up the bulk of the applications, which we discussed. And then looking at code enforcement, next slide.
Thirty something.
Are you asking by zone or just total?
Zone slide. Okay.
Thirty of those have been in R one. And eight of those have been in R two. And then I would also like to point out in R three, you had five times, they were all S T R condos, which is no longer, it's not allowed in R three without an emission requirement.
So on the code code enforcement side, um, we have enhanced code enforcement efforts by hiring two new code enforcement uh officers. And one is dedicated to doing S T R inspections and really tracking, putting those group, um, if he gets a notice of violation or creates a notice of violation. Uh, based on information from Jan and Shelley, if we know someone's operating that permit. So that's, that's been a big change, is that we have someone on code enforcement dedicated to S T Rs. Now, code enforcement will be trans- transitioning to the police department. Just about the end of April is what we're looking at, um, and so that will give. Give them a lot more lined up with the P D, and so that P D is also looking at these issues on the weekend, overnight, you know. Different hours where we won't have code enforcement. And then we've also changed the municipal court case process, or we're in the process of changing that, and we've also created the administrative adjudication process. Which is really streamlined, your basic code violations like trash and watering.
May I ask that the um, Mr. Bailey, take the opportunity now, Anna, to interrupt you and and put some flash on the bone with the three. Transitioning administrative adjudication and and efficiency of municipal.
Sure, and I think we have our police chief in the audience in the back. Um, I want to point out that this is um something that Chief did a lot of research on last year as part of the leadership program. Uh, that he went through Texas Tech Island Lakes, uh, it was. Code enforcement under P D, so a lot of cities are doing this. Um, as Anna mentioned, it it creates a lot more efficiency, a lot more consistency. Uh, this is what P D does, there's a violation, they take it from the violation. Uh, all the way through the court system, they deal with this sort of thing every, every single day. Now, we're having a real hard time with the backlog, um, code enforcement, the the fit in development services. Uh, in the decade that I've been here, I've never felt that it was as effective as it 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 could have been. Um, as we're getting into the process, uh, we're identifying issues with some of the software that. Uh, code was using likely transitioning completely to the Brazos software that P D uses again for efficiency. Uh, that is what it's designed for, that's what it's used for. Um, just the record keeping and tracking of violations that that P D does, a very good system of doing that. As Anna mentioned, this basically turns the entire police department, all of their staff. Into weekend and after hours code enforcement, where right now it's very spotty. Uh, we don't have full time code enforcement coverage all the time, whether it's weekday, weekend. Uh, so this also addresses that, uh, the employees want to be over there. Uh, they're very excited about the the opportunity to to be there, so again, I think that move is going to. Uh, result in a lot more efficiency, a lot more effectiveness when it comes to enforcement of of code.
What's your response to those who would say, we don't want our police? Driving around tagging people for their water, dry water, in other words, they need to be at a higher level of of public safety. Um, that's been something that's been mentioned to me.
Right, so the majority of the the code violations that the code enforcement officers. Uh, will be processing or watering violations, trash, parking, uh, those that happen during the day.
So they will continue to do that, but their process goes to P D level?
That's right.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't think you will see very often a police officer in someone's yard and have a watering violation, although Tim, you can speak. Uh, to this, you probably remember, um, that was the case at one point, I think fifteen years ago, fifteen, twenty years ago. Um, code enforcement was part of P D and um all of the police officers, whether it was a watering violation or otherwise. Now, because they're not certified police officers, we feel like we're putting our code enforcement officer sometime in a little bit jeopardy responding to. Uh, noise violations, large groups, after hours and so forth. Uh, P D, the officers are much more well equipped and trained to deal with that sort of thing. Uh, and we're seeing a lot of that, I wouldn't say a lot of it, but when we run into those types of things, they can be touchy situations. So regarding the administrative adjudication process.
No, I want to get your chief, do you have anything to add?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, we're we're just excited, uh, we've been having weekly meetings and. Meeting every other week with code enforcement to make this a smooth transition. Uh, we're excited, code inside, code enforcement's excited, um, and like, uh, Clinton said, it's, we're coming up with processes. Um, that are that are proven, uh, through police enforcement before, and we look at working the same process with code enforcement. A lot of efficiency and a lot of communication uh in the code and P D now that we're getting held together.
Thank you, sir.
As far as it, um, administrative adjudication, we do have the administrative adjudication officer. Uh, at City Hall currently. Uh, after the space improvements are made to the municipal court lease space, uh, they will be in the same space with municipal court using their admin. Right next to P D, uh, with code, all involved. right next to PD with code, all involved right there, so the communication will be a lot better. But so far, the minor violations, we're calling them, watering being the main one, trash, parking. As he's issuing those violations and posting hearing days, what we're finding is people are paying those fines online. As we're going into stage four, I think we're going to see a little bit more of this. The first violation for those types of minor violations, twenty-five dollars, then it escalates to two hundred and fifty dollars, and then finally to seven fifty. So that process is working really well, taking water pressure off municipal court. Again, a very efficient process, they will be housed with municipal court. In terms of changes to municipal court, we did have a recent executive session discussion. Nick, I might ask you if I can talk about anything with respect to that discussion now, or would you like for me to wait on that at this point?
Well, I think it's pretty preliminary to talk about that, we haven't received any direction from anyone, so probably better to wait.
Right, and basically really firming up the, again, being able to firm up those processes through municipal to make sure that we can carry those violations all the way through. Excuse me for interrupting, but this is your point, Tim, about this is not a, just an activity for S D Rs. That water, trash, noise, that's everybody, alright, okay.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next slide on code enforcement data, so this is almost a year's worth, starting again April first, and the ordinance changed. You'll see the largest number of S T R violations being solid waste and watering restrictions. Almost half of the solid waste violations were at S T Rs, about a quarter of the water restrictions were at S T Rs. Other issues, lighting and lighting being an issue, but that's also caught during an inspection, so that's a reason, reason that a permit would be issued initially if they fail the inspection because of lighting.
Any questions on the recorded violations?
I have one question. If we are a dark side, dark sky community, why do we allow those string lights everywhere?
We, we don't, they do have requirements to be capped, there are some string lights that can follow those.
Around town, they're not. Bearable, no cats.
Correct, so if we go to do an inspection and they're strong, they have to come down before we'll issue the permit.
And what about in ordinary residential neighborhoods that are not S T Rs?
They receive a violation, so you can see there, there were eighty-four lighting incidents and fifty-three were in or at S T Rs.
Thank you.
Next slide. So as we move through this process, just thinking about the big picture and where we are as a city and we've got an election coming up, May sixth, we've got public hearing notices, so when you guys do decide to to move this forward and take action, just that we will have to send out about six thousand letters to all the property owners, and that does, we do have a lead time on that because we can't do that in-house, we have to third-party that out, so there's a little bit of lead time on that, because those have to be received ten days before the hearing date. Comp plan is the other thing we're doing right now. We're right in the thick of that, our second open house will be April twenty fifth, and you guys will be convening again for a special comp plan meeting in May. And then, of course, we expect the adoption of the comp plan by winter of this year. And then in the background, of course, is the A D A Texas Legislature, which are still meeting, and there's some, there are some potential statutes that would impact our ability to even regulate S T Rs, so that's all just kind of background and things to consider. Do you want to go on to this?
Need to get.
Okay, so last, last slide, schedule and next steps, again, today, there's no formal action, but staff is looking for general direction on, on specific topics that you want us to, to get into. Again, you could have another joint meeting, or either the city council or the P and Z board can take that action to make the, to start the revisions. And again, the public notices to the newspaper and individual property owners. And then, so we'll have a public hearing, ultimately whatever revisions are made, P and Z will have a public hearing, and then city council will have a public hearing in consideration for action.
Emily, do you have any update from your contacts in Austin about what's going on with legislature? They're gonna close on May ninth, twenty ninth, I think. Is there anything we should? I mean, there's things on the table that we're gonna try to address about S T Rs and municipalities' power regulations, or you have any update on what's going on and what might impact what we do today?
Nothing final yet, so things are moving through the committee process, and there are relevant bills that are in committee that haven't been passed by House, either chamber, House or Senate, and you know, things could still be vetoed by the governor, so everything's still very much in flux.
And the bills that are going into committee are subject to amendment within the committee, so we don't really know what bills are.
Or the floor.
Yeah.
So it's.
Then they've got to go to conference committee. So you don't have any, any inside information to tell you what the chances are? You don't have a deep throat? Yeah. Well.
But that, that is, that brings up, what's our timing on that?
Yeah.
You know, we started this iteration of everything back fall, we had the task force that ended in January, this week starts April, we've got, you know, I, I just would like to know what y'all are thinking in terms of, are we gonna be doing this every couple of months? Cause.
Do we have to wait for the legislature? I mean, really, we can work ourselves to death and all of a sudden it has to go away.
That's true, what do you think are the urgencies on us now?
Well, as of last Friday's Texas Travel Alliance update regarding the legislative session, there are no major S T R bills that came to attention. Last week's biggest focus from the legislature had to do with gaming, and a significant portion of Wednesday was spent on the gaming regulations and potential for coming to Texas. None of those have come up in our flagging from lobbyists to this point, could have made it to our. I'll have another call this Friday, and if there's something pops up on S T Rs, I'll be happy to let you know.
There's a statewide S T R regulation bill, but I don't think the, that has, that would be, that haven't passed. But there is, the, the preemption bills could apply to us.
Is there any population cap on the preemption bill? It's for everyone, from zero to middle.
Basically just makes us all general law entities again.
Tim, I take your point, I would request we keep plowing through and make the assumption that we're not gonna be contravening by the legislature. Which may be a dangerous.
That, just throwing it out of the bag for somebody smarter than me in the new.
Well, it's not me, but I'm thinking, trying to guess what legislature is gonna do. Probably a fool's errand, and we've got a lot of foundational work done, but I'd like to see us move on.
I have a question, Mick, as we move forward with this, and this is at P and Z, will the people that were recused today still be refused in future discussions?
Well, we'll have to look at each agenda and see what's posted.
Okay.
And if, if it's a general discussion about short-term regulations, they would likely need to recuse again. There may be particular elements of the discussion that they would not be comfortable for, but we just have to look at it at a case-by-case basis and give them our best advice.
They're supposed to make that work very difficult with five people voting.
Yeah.
You've got to have, you've got to have at least four for form.
Right.
So.
Five is important. Right now in the U Z. That still doesn't. Each individual has to make their own decision about conflict of interest, and we give the best advice we could, and the numbers fall where they fall.
I'm staying.
And can I ask another question? With annexation, is there a, maybe totally off. When, when cities annex, is there a state law that says that all newly annexed property comes in as R one?
Yeah. No, you, you have some options in your ordinance.
So the question I have is for future use, we're looking at the, at the comp plan, should we take a look at having new annexes right in coming in something other than R one to get us forward?
Well, actually, that's not on our agenda today.
Okay. All right.
But yes, there are options.
Okay. Here.
If we're ready, we'll, we will move into the, the tracking spreadsheet, so what this is, is it kind of summarizes the proposed changes that came from the task force. Generally, it's in order of the amended ordinance that was included in the agenda packets, but we've tried to group them as best we can. Mick, I do think it's important to start with number eighteen, so jump into the back page. And that, that's the general question of what, i- if changes are made, what would these changes apply to? Because we have so many existing S T R properties. We need to be sure there's a clear understanding of what would apply to the existing properties and what could only apply to new S T Rs. Can you just touch on that?
Well, we, we could give you our best advice on that, depending on what the regulation actually looked like, but normally, we would likely recommend that current permit holders be grandfather, but that they have to come into compliance with, within a reasonable period of time, such as ninety days or a hundred and twenty days to the new regulations. And some of the operational regulations, we would expect them to fly right away, because they wouldn't be impact any finances or investment.
So there's some provisions that could, that could be applied to S T Rs under any permit at any time?
Yeah, I believe so, and those would just off the top of my head, I would say, looking at the regulations, the ones that relate to fire safety and health would apply to everyone.
Would you consider occupancy one of those?
Could be.
Okay.
It could be, and it depends on how you draft your occupancy requirements.
Okay.
And there are a number of those in the twenty twenty-two ordinance that say that, that this applies to all new and existing.
I know y'all have expressed this frustration, which one are y'all on, twenty thirteen, eighteen, twenty? Yeah, and so what, so what I want to do is do everything we can to find a path to make that clear and easier and make it helpful, so what I'm hearing you say, it depends on what the specific is.
Right, and remember, if fire safety and health safety, when you determine a regimen or a requirement, those should apply to everyone immediately, I mean, there's really no reason to grandfather on those. If though a regulation may implicate fire safety, but not be direct enough, we may, we may want to look alive and amortize any financial cost over time and continue to operate.
Okay, so as we go along, you will speak up?
Well, I would like to give a message, know that my current colleague, Rachel Roggio with the firm is also involved in this process, and she's listening in right now.
Okay.
From Fort Worth, so she'd be a big help on those issues.
Okay, so if there's a specific, could we make this apply to all making your work easier? And more efficient? I don't know. So did you get the question answered?
Yes, I, we just wanted to start with that, so, so if it's all right, we can kind of just work through the spreadsheet, some of these items we've already touched on this morning.
Let me just say that the highlighted yellow ones are the ones that I asked. That reminds me of focus of our meeting. Not the focus of our meeting today, but that's what, if you see anything else you'd like to address while we're off doing that time too, bless the morning today. And we have some. We have other comments, Shelley, you both signed up?
It's, she's been.
Okay, if, if there's general comment, I'm happy to take it now, but if you're specific and you have something to contribute, I'm happy to record, happy to recognize. In other words, you don't have to have signed up, but I will apply a timeline.
Just by, by us four can say.
Okay, the four people who have, who have expressed conflict of interest on this will be observers only. Right, those are your same laws. Oh, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, you are, so not restricted from comment, however. And I, I have a question about that, is if, Mick, if they are, if they're recusing themselves from being fighting and serving members, does that take away their rights as citizens in common?
No, anyone can speak about their own property, that's on the agenda. So in other words, if there's an application on their own property, they're entitled to speak. If it's a general discussion about regulation that impacts properties, including their own, they are not entitled to participate. I don't know if that's clear enough. But let's say there was a zone change application or a C U P application for an individual member of the council or P and Z, they could step down and speak to the board on that issue, but they can't participate in deliberation as a member of the board.
But they can speak from the audience and go to the podium and get their piece?
Not in general, not in general, if there's an item on their, affecting their property, they can't. Oh, so if they have an application before you. And, and the interesting thing about the Texas conflict of interest laws is votes don't matter, it can be a workshop, that there don't have to be any votes, and whether you speak or not does not matter if you're on the board, in other words.
So what's.
Sitting and listening is the participation.
So once you've expressed a conflict of interest, from now on, you have no right to say anything about that.
Whatever that.
About that topic.
About that topic.
But that doesn't restrict them, even if it's related to that topic, but they have an application to the board on their own property.
Like they just talk.
Yes.
So are, are you saying they're in violation of the conflict of interest law by being here?
No. No, it just looks awful. Because, and this goes, Attorney General's opinions on this issue, which is really difficult, there, there's more than one definition in the, in the code, but conflict of interest, and Attorney General said, hell, that if they don't participate by sitting with the board, that's all they have to do, that's why we recommend they sit in the audience, but if they were sitting on the board listening, yes.
Okay.
So it, it sounds like, you know, but that's the rule, so.
Listening through y'all.
Okay, it, well, that's because the definition of deliberation in the statute just says sitting and listening.
Thank you.
I think George would like to speak.
Yeah.
So I guess I don't have the sheet or the, 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 the question about metrics on lighting. So we have.
On lighting?
Lighting, nevermind.
Let me, let me wait till we get to that issue, if you don't mind, that specific issue. Because what I want to do next is, Garrett, is, and you, and did, did you cover your priority with eighteen or?
Well, I, I think that would be a general question to start the discussion, but we can get into ours.
Okay, so I would like to, to ask the committees which of the ones you would like to pursue first, how, how, what strikes you as what we need to do first? Or, or discuss first, or deliberate area that's being discussed? Occupancy.
So do you look at item number four?
Okay.
There, there's.
And I want y'all to speak up about what is it you need from us today most? As well, okay, so that's, I have another one.
So, so the main thing, the, the S T R task force proposed two options, the lesser two. The first being one occupant per two hundred square feet or two occupants per bedroom plus two occupants, or in a max of eight. So the, the, this is a combination of the two ordinances we, we already have, so twenty eighteen, it was two, one per two hundred square feet max. The twenty twenty-two ordinance is one, I'm sorry, two occupants per bedroom plus two.
Right now, the code is ten, right?
Twelve. Twelve, it isn't that.
Twelve, okay.
So just a point of clarification, I think that Mike was suggesting eight max, and I think we suggest ten max.
Yeah, that's where I go.
So what, what are the permits, what number of S T Rs have, what was the occupancy?
Can you quantify the occupancies?
So are you asking the average occupancy rate, or is, I mean, we're kind of all over the world. I mean, do you have the information to say we have five hundred of our S T Rs are supposed to have twelve occupancy or four, or whatever?
We do have a recommendation, unfortunately, I don't have the moving name, but we do have it available, and we can identify all occupancy for every S number. Every S number that's under your issue has a permitted occupancy that is found in violation of, is a violation itself and could potentially lead to relocation of the permit, among other regulations. I would like more information because if we're dealing with grandfathering, it doesn't make sense to arbitrarily say eight or ten if. We're going to be dealing with a lot that maybe are twelve already or whatever, so I, I don't think I can make that decision either way, without knowing. How, what's square footage, you know?
Sure, here's a question I have is, this might be Mick's question too, is that if occupancy. Is a fire safety issue, that's, if that's a health safety, well version, does that preclude? A uh, by two thousand thirteen ordinance allowed to have this many occupants. So does, would the, let's say that the um, the bar code refers to two hundred square feet per occupancy. That's a state bar code, does that preempt? You know, the lateral authority, uh, social lateral authority, if the state says that this is the law. Then it's enforceable in Westfield County and Bedford Protector. So should we, you know, is now the time to say, okay. The basis of our occupancy limits is going to be based on two hundred square, it's going to be based on the fire code of two hundred square feet per. In every, in, in every.
In unit.
Yeah, in, in, yeah, in, in and every uh, S T R that's permitted, go latter under which. Um, which code, which uh, ordinance, whether it's two thousand eight, two thousand thirteen, two thousand.
The state law becomes the controlling authority.
Right.
And we're going to follow that and.
As far as occupancy goes.
Okay.
Is that? Well, there's some concern that those fire code provisions that's applied to residential. May not be fully enforceable.
Okay.
So it is, I think, important to tie your occupancy limits to fire safety. Uh, and the way you do that, you do have probably some discretion on how to do that because of those court cases. Um, but the occupancy limits, if you word your limits right in the ordinance. Make it clear that they are for fire safety and public safety purposes, should apply immediately to, to all. No matter what, what permit.
Yes.
What ordinance you're bringing in permitted of.
Right, yes.
So can you go retroactive on something like that then?
No.
So, so if somebody's in violation today because they had, and we changed the rules. From our level and say, okay, now we're going according to fire code, what does that do to the people that are not, that are not complying on that issue? They can stay that way?
No, if it, if it's really a fire safety regulation and occupancy can be, uh, that, that can be required to come into compliance.
So we can't grandfather like party houses that we said were allowed?
Well, you can, you can, I'm just saying, uh. Maybe the type of regulations that do not carry any type of grandfathering or, or rights to continue are fire safety and health safety.
Hmm.
I don't have the power to reduce occupancy, I mean, the limit occupancy is not reduced, it limited.
Because in, I'm talking about in these residential areas, because the problems are the number of people on it, yeah. Did Rachel have something to say on that?
Yeah, if I could just jump in briefly, um, so. Sorry, what was that?
Go ahead, yes, go ahead, Rachel.
Great, thank you. So another thing to consider with the occupancy limits is that we're also needing to balance the freedom to assemble. When we place a limitation, how many people can gather on one property at any given time, so. We can't, we can't set a limit that's so low that it can't be tied to fire safety reasonably. So whatever occupancy maximum we set, it needs to be necessary to serve the interest of fire safety. Um, as Mick said, we can, you know, tie that when we draft the ordinance, we can tie. The safety concern into whatever we do draft, but we need to kind of maintain that balance between what's necessary and what may not be quite as necessary. Specifically for fire safety. Uh, I will also add that. Uh, we can, Mick mentioned amortization of financial concerns earlier, but we can also amortize. Essentially create an amortization period to allow property owners to come into compliance, you know, over a period of perhaps sixty days. To where they switch their advertising with the new occupancy limit or whatever steps they need to take. To adjust to the new ordinance, so it doesn't need to be a black and white, you know, the ordinance is passed on this date, you can no longer. Utilize the previous occupancy that was allowed under the old ordinance, we can give them some time to adjust, but we can make grandfathered properties. Comply with health and safety regulations like this one.
All right, I have a question about the, the assembly requirement that you just alluded to, which is a little bit different. Are you talking, you're talking about people that, we're talking about people that want to spend the night at this structure. As opposed to gathering for a party like Emily just said, so uh. How do we differentiate that uh? Or is saying from my, because I think what we're really interested in is the people that are actually going to spend the night there, not show up for the party and then leave.
I think that's, that's one issue, is the, how many, the overnight, the overnight occupancy, and then the second issue is. Does the two hundred, does the barcode limit the number of people who gather on the property? Or is that, does the barcode just apply to overnight? The permanent, the permanent number of overnight guests.
Right, so I think depending, oh, sorry, is someone else speaking? Uh, I, I think depending on what type of property we're working with, the fire code might regulate different classifications slightly differently. Uh, I don't have the fire code in front of me right now to, to reference that. Um, I will say that some courts have not differentiated between occupants who are there to sleep and occupants who are there to party. Um, the Austin Court of Appeals, when it struck down Austin's short-term rental ordinance. Didn't make, didn't find any difference between those two things, so. Essentially, what I'm saying is the overnight occupants are considered to be gathering there for the purposes of the freedom to assemble. If that distinction makes sense.
So this, as you see the comments in the staff, or they refer to two hundred square feet per occupants. The, the pepper line G C A D is, is not a huge problem, is it?
Sorry, say.
Having to rely on G C A D data? I mean, important inspection, if I go in.
I don't know. It is a, a little problematic, I would say, but, but we have a simple solution, we can just require a floor plan. Or as part of the, the submitted process, that they submit a plan that shows the square footage.
And what is?
Okay, Shelby did comment here, the, the current twenty twenty-two ordinance. Uh, regarding occupancy, says the maximum occupancy under this subsection is only applicable to the number of persons eighteen years of age or older. That are running, running the temporary transient lodging for a specified period of occupancy. And excludes any other person visiting the occupants at the location. So that's, that's that forty, yeah.
The red line text that's in the packet is a little bit more specific, uh, and I think it mentioned the red line that.
What number is that?
This is on the red line that this.
Oh, it's on the, yeah, the, the graph of the ordinance that.
Has that been made reviewed by Mick's concern or? Not.
Mick, I do know you coordinated in Mike's. On the, the ordinance markups that the S C R task force prepared.
Yeah, we did have a discussion about, like, some of those items, yeah, we did.
Page eleven of the package. So it's in page seven of your package, if you have that available.
Okay, uh, maximum occupancy under the subsection is only applicable to the number of persons eighteen years of age or older that are. Residing at the S T R and excludes any other persons visiting the occupants but not residing at the S T R. That's all clear to me.
And to be clear, we. Right, and on the enforcement side of this, it's not as if we go and knock and, and count heads. It's really how they're advertising it, that's really kind of the only hook we've got, is if, if they're actually permitted for ten, but they're, they're advertising for fourteen. And that's the violation, counting heads is, is far more difficult.
And we've seen it during the inspection process, you know, we've seen multiple beds in the bedroom, you can tell that they're setting it up to, to house a lot more occupants.
I suppose.
I mean, could it just be total occupants?
Could be total.
Yeah, we, I always consider anybody who's ten at all, like, I don't, where I differentiate.
So, is it appropriate to, uh, get a, a bit of a consensus on which way you're leaning? About the fire code two hundred feet or, or um. About it?
Personally, I like fire code, that seems a little bit more standard than this arbitrary bedroom, what size is your bedroom, it's like.
I mean, with the fire code, I think a lot of them that are turning across to the bedroom, so if you count bedrooms. You don't come out with a fair count, square footages.
No, actually, the opposite of that. The opposite of that. Show me some examples.
So, for example, some of the permits that we implemented in twenty eighteen, I'd give an example of a one thousand square foot unit that has one bedroom. That has an occupancy of five, even though they have one bedroom, because of the thousand square feet. Whereas if it was a one-bedroom unit under the new ordinance, they would only have an occupancy of four, because you get two per bedroom plus additional two guests. And a different example would be a three-bedroom unit, under the old ordinance, that is in a eight hundred square foot house. They're limited to a max occupancy of four, whereas under the new ordinance, they can go to four, six, eight. So there, there are differences depending on whether we calculate by bedroom count or the square footage.
Yes. Fairly enough, no. I'm sorry, Jim.
Doesn't matter, shoot some comment then.
I think Tammy.
I, I could say what Shelby said, because that's what, the, the two per per bedroom is working way better. Uh, and so. In Shelby's business, I mean, I've been to two bedroom houses that have beds in the hallways, yes, because of their two thousand. So, uh, Shelby and I have multiple conversations about this, and the two per per bedroom. Is working a lot better than the two hundred square foot. What Mike was saying was whatever the smaller number was, when, when we were discussing it on the. Castle, not, not one for the other, but whichever was the smaller, but if you're only going to choose one. And I'm coming to come to our service as a tape property, that you have bed in every corner. Um, so I'm more in line with the, the, the two per bedroom is working a lot better. Than the two hundred per.
So we got two.
I stand corrected, and here from Rachel's input.
Mike? But if we're open as the lesser of those two, because if we do have thousands of square foot homes, they subdivide bedrooms into smaller bedrooms. It technically means the spec, and so there's eight or ten people in a thousand square feet. So the bedroom count there gives you way more density than the square footage gives. So if you have the choice, it's the lesser of the two, then you're restricting occupancy to, you know, the fewest number of people below us then.
How do you make that statement?
Well, I, I came to the twenty twenty-two ordinance, and it has some meaty regarding that, and it said the visual guest bed is made place in bedrooms that would be two occupants. Provided that the bedroom is fifty square feet, that bedroom area is rich occupancy, so it has to be a minimum of a hundred square feet. In order to place beds and operate as a bedroom. And ultimately, that occupancy cannot be exceeded, so regardless of if they have five bedrooms, six bedrooms, seven bedrooms, the max occupancy is still twelve, under the current ordinance.
So what you're saying is, if, if you really want to plan, that now you just sort of, you go to the max number and, and let it fall where it will? So you could have a five-bedroom house. Under the current ordinance should be. Twelve, but it's, we have a max of ten.
We currently have a max of twelve.
Twelve, okay, so, okay, that'd be two plus two. Two per bedroom plus two.
I'm just, I'm torn, this is like minutia, I think when I was in college, we paid no attention to whatever it was listed, and you had to apologize to that. You know, it was like, you go and there's a bunch of y'all in and you can afford this place and say you're there, so I get that. Any kind of meaningful enforcement will be on the advertising side. I get that, I just think our, our ordinance is so long, like, y'all, I read through Charleston and Hilton Head this morning. Like, in no time, and I just think, how, we're making this so complicated. Everything.
How's the others?
In Charleston, you can only have it before the, in any S T R.
Okay.
And it's very stringent on some other items, but in the dome.
So they're just supposed to find, they're just supposed to find a number.
Four, no, in any five property, doesn't matter, so I just. And Charleston's different, even if we are in there very historic, but I'm just curious. I wish we had a computer here that we could type in to figure out, okay, well, how many are there that are eight? How many are over two thousand square feet, where are we? I think from a processing standpoint, S A W preferred the bedroom count, it, it's easier, it's simpler, it, it simplifies the review process. Either needed or you don't, there's no question of occupancy, um, some of the non-competing properties that we reviewed in process, you know, recently. There's been discrepancies regarding this footage, and then the applicant comes back, because well, you're not, you need to account, you know, this footage here, and there, so. Two per bedroom is pretty simple from a S A W standpoint, I, I think, when it simplifies our process, but. Thank you for that, two, two bedroom plus two, or whatever. Or just basing the occupancy count off the bedrooms, it is my recommendation, and however, so not doing the plus two that it currently is, but doing.
I, I think the key there is basing it off the number of bedrooms, however you want to do the calculation, but.
Here's my issue with that, you are encouraging people to buy big properties to run big S T Rs. And, sorry. And if you want to, if you want to lead toward a different reality. Then it is, I don't care how big the property is, this is the limit, so then that owner says, you know what, I don't think I want to do that. So that's what regulations do, they, they direct behavior in certain ways to accomplish certain objectives. Based on community character that we're trying to build, I understand you can go overboard. But that's where I'm coming from, is, is not to work to accommodate people who want to buy a big house, oh, well, they can put two per bedroom, whatever. It's, and that's what Charleston did, obviously, is, I don't care if you got a big old honking house, you can rent to four adults, that's it. And if whichever one gets us closer to that is my opinion, if it's the fire code. Um, because I'm not, Tammy, I'm sorry, I'm not that concerned about how well it works for your business, uh, because I have other objectives, personally. And, and we know that that's the problem, right, is too many people in one house creating an issue and a neighborhood. So this is our opportunity to make that statement in a in a reasonable, effective, enforceable way. And as you say, if enforcement is, here's our rule. Yeah, you can break it and you may get away with it, but you can't break it in your advertising.
To answer your question in partial, while it was not official, a simple quick query on Airbnb with the minimum number of guests at eight returns four hundred and ten properties in seven square. Now that does not include within the city limits, but that is what is being shown on Airbnb alone.
Quick question. If we go with the fire ordinance option, and it it's two people per two hundred square feet, or one person per whatever the number is, does that apply also to full-time residents? Yeah, yeah.
Well, we do have uniform code that we follow related to residential structures for the design of how many bedrooms and so forth, and what the appropriate occupancy would be. But we do not regulate how many members of the family can live in a particular home.
I guess.
This is a transient community, and that's what makes it different.
Okay. I I guess my question is, if I have a Christmas party and I have forty people there, that would clearly go beyond the fire ordinance. Is that correct? I hope not. Yes, that is correct.
It'd be complaint driven, and we do regulate noise, and you know, I don't know that it ever happens with the Fire Marshal history jurisdiction over crowds, wherever they are, even in your home. But it's a practical matter. How often does that get enforced? Definitely not very often.
Okay, thank you.
So the way that it's written here, the lesser of two options, one option for two or three or or a max with the the term of the lesser there.
I like ten, actually.
Staff made it clear that it's easier with it on the bedroom. We're making that also complicated, which also makes it complicated because the S T R owners, if you can make it simpler, then let's do that.
Okay, well, I'm hearing a different thing. You said while ago that.
I said I stand corrected.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not. You might have done that frequently, I just want to make sure. You're clear, I was just making myself. All right, sounds like that we we're not going to have a up of direction here today, but they're they are listening.
Data has been requested.
You're saying that the two options, that what we rely on staff to do is it is easier to regulate number of people per bedroom. Plus two, okay. All right.
Sure.
Sure. If I understand what a request is, for the general staff comments issue section starts with number eighteen to get through those, and it's ten thirty-five. So would you all like to check five now, or? Move ahead, any strong feelings? Sorry. Move ahead. All right, so nineteen, update cup requirements based on overall goals or ordinance provisions takes up a lot of step time. Possibly utilize special exception. Updating the cup requirements based on overall goals. You want to extend on that?
Well, you know, we, I think the cup process was included to to give P and Z and the city council an opportunity to review S T Rs on a case-by-case basis. It does take up a lot of time. I mean, y'all have already seen that. So Rachel and Mick had had mentioned this special exception that would possibly make this a simpler process. Nick, or can y'all touch on that?
It it could make it simpler, perhaps, because special exceptions are heard by the Board of Adjustment. And the difference between a special exception and a variance type issue is that a special exception is actually built into the ordinance, and you have requirements, and someone can seek a special exception. And that's gone, that goes to the Board of Adjustment for decision, doesn't have to go to P and Z and council.
So the other option would be to just get rid of the the C U P process and just make a determination, is it a permitted use or is it not within that district?
So that example is actually conditional use permit based on sections that are point one one zero, which is within the non-conformist. So that applies to any non-conformant structure, short term or another. So that that example would be a little different, but a good example would be the R two historic district. You can see four or five of those conditional use permits now. That would be a good example of if you like that use there, that could be permitted by right as opposed to a conditional use permit, or R two in historic, which could remain a conditional use permit, but perhaps with exceptions or transition to a special, you already know.
I, I started my career, whatever that might be called, went on the Board of Adjustment, and at the time, and I've said this many, many times, after looking at the application form and the requirements to go to Board of Adjustment, I didn't think Jesus Christ could get could get a variance with the way the rules are written. They could not qualify, nobody could qualify to get past that board. Now, if if that's what they're up against, then they ain't gonna do it. I mean, you can't. I mean, why kick it to the Board of Adjustment? Because if you follow the rules, I don't think you can do it.
They're not gonna give them. Well, I think that's important, that there are set evaluation criteria that you must meet to make these requests.
Well, I understand.
It's different from a variance. I think what you're talking about, Tim, is the Board of Adjustments required to find a hardship to grant a variance, and it can't be financial.
I got, that's my point.
But a special exception, if you decide to go that route, is also in the jurisdiction of the Board of Adjustments, not a variance, because the ordinance would have special criteria to follow that are different. And it's one.
So is there any discretion then to the Board of Adjustments, or if they qualify, they should automatically get it?
No, it's discretionary with that board, based on the presentation and the application.
Charleston does that, really changes, takes the S T Rs, and then go to the Board of Adjustment. I like the idea because I think it might create pain in the dome, need to be able to learn about something, the planning issues, don't need big picture things, so they're not going to get into the huge shut up. Small type of class.
Which is what we've been doing since last June, is the number, and most of those are cups, those are R two cups and the historic.
Without specific criteria.
Remember also the Board of Adjustment, you have no review powers over what they do. Only a court does. So P and Z and City Council can't say, well, you guys messed up, we're going to fix it, can't do that. So you would be giving that maybe to that that one.
And if I can add on as well, one, one tool that I use with a lot of the short-term rental ordinances that I've drafted, where I include a special exception mechanism, is I can provide specific factors for the board to consider. You know, it's permissive, the board may consider certain things. But it provides kind of a guideline to the Board of Adjustment and highlights what the city's priorities are when considering whether a special exception is appropriate for a certain property. So that that kind of helps the board tailor their decision to that specific situation. So that is one thing that we can keep in mind as well.
Well, that's news to us, but that's that's a very good answer, Rachel. Thank you.
Okay, so is the issue to remove cup or to finesse it? Okay.
I said finesse it. If we have the opportunity to do it with the Board of Adjustment, can we go back if we don't like it?
So if we, if we go to the Board of Adjustments, do we eliminate cup? And just do special exceptions?
Well, they're actually different things, but I suppose that's in theory you could, yes.
We can, we can eliminate cup by putting in special exception.
Going forward, yeah. It's a different, what's a different device under zoning law.
Sounds like everybody would run more smoothly if we eliminated it.
Well, you know, conditional use permits and special exceptions are similar because they set conditions and they set criteria to look at for approval or denial. Special exceptions aren't used as often anymore as they used to be, so they aren't used in a lot of different situations like they used to be all over the place. And conditional use permits can be replaced special exceptions sort of over time. Everywhere, and I'm just in progress here. And so I I don't, I think it's just a different device to achieve the same objectives under the zoning ordinance.
So the issue, issue I see here is an R two piece of property on Frenchland Lane is different than an R two piece of property on Chubert Street.
Correct.
And so the special exceptions would apply to the R two piece of property on Chubert Street, but will not apply to the R two piece of property on Frenchland Lane.
Well, it's like Rachel said, we would have in the ordinance itself, some guidance on the on the important interests.
Where, where, when did we take in?
Yeah, and then the board could look at the entire, that particular property only, determine whether those objectives are being met by that application.
So. Shaggy, what's down?
If I may give an example of conditional use permits in R two specifically. So in R two, S T R unoccupied is permitted by right. Does it require conditional use permit if it's not in the fourth district? Or an industrial facility requires a conditional use permit, and for the benefit of S T R facilities, multiple units on one property. So an S T R facility requires a conditional use permit. However, there's qualifiers that you have to meet in order to be able to apply. Those qualifiers would be if the property is immediately abutting, non-residential, so the district, open space is not included, or a club that allows commercial use, and when located in historic over the district, use the permit to a maximum of one structure per five houses per feet. So those were some qualifiers that we built in in order to even request a C P for an S T R facility, whereas an S two unoccupied is permitted by right.
That's money, right?
And that's what's taking y'all so much time, right? That's what eats up staff time.
The board is prepared for a special exception presentation to the Board of Adjustments to date this time, formal product, preparing C P for that event.
It would only require one housing versus two, and it would provide some additional direction. You would know what those specifics are, whether they qualify or not.
You drill down, you drill down what they have to do, basically. I mean, you got to narrow it down, or if they qualify, then they can get back, or they're done again.
So another example of a conditional use permit specifically being on one would be for S T R unoccupied. You have seen none of those because the parameters are so specific. In order to qualify for an S T R unoccupied in R one, two or more law lines must be lawfully permitted and abutting lawfully permitted S T Rs since evidently being excessive, let's not count. And seventy-five percent of our properties on the same side of the street, between the intersection streets, must be legally honored, and so very, very specific right here.
All right, further, that requires those. Taking, taking self-protectionation based on this needs to be dealt with to help them and to help us. All right, I've got to start by.
So to move forward, we're thinking of a reclamation set.
Yeah.
That's going to bring.
I'm just getting the sense that through our discussion, the float today is going to come out, here are the things that we're picking from today's meeting, you follow.
Okay, thank you.
So we cannot enforce private restrictions. This is brought up in the task force. Could we stop somebody because we know that they're violating an H O A or so forth? And from what I think we're getting, no, what I've heard from it is that the city cannot enforce an H O A. All right, so.
So through our development process or the application process, we do require the owner to acknowledge that they need to check into those types of things.
But if they violate.
So as long as they click that checkbox, it's good on our end.
Okay, but if they violate it, that's between them and the. Okay, so we can check that one off.
Yep.
Yeah.
Number twenty-one. Update condo conditions, definitions. S T R regs currently limit number of permits to eight. And more than eight is considered a hotel. So difficult to enforce, who's allowed to operate an S T R in a condo regime? First come, first served. Any explanation to follow on that?
And then on, on R three.
So S.
Condo in what zones?
S T R condo, it requires a conditional permit and also that is allowed to include R three, C one, using one point five.
Like, like the carriage park cases we've seen recently.
So the concern that staff has is that currently the definition of a hotel motel is of an operation that provides more than eighty units, so so mine. Well, the concern with an S T R condominium, like we saw in the car conditional use permit, is that there's more than thirty units. And so we then are placed in a position of identify, it's first come, first served, the first eight that would qualify that request could potentially have it through the conditional use permit process.
What is the quickest fix to that? From your perspective?
Allowed, condominiums remain as a venture. They already, they're already not permitted by right in any zone of the district. They all require a conditional use permit.
And the C U P currently doesn't have any parameters either. So the C U P currently does not have any parameters for what you're considering.
So what happens? They're just grandfathered in if there's already condos existing that are S T Rs. And do you know how many there are total? We have eight. Or I think we're somewhere around twelve to fifteen total. Now, full disclosure, we do have some condominium developments that are coming online currently, so that'll add to our number. And they are non-conformal, they would be grand, they were approved prior to the adoption of the ordinance. So I think right now we're somewhere around fifteen.
That Eagle Street?
I'd be in favor of ending S T Rs and others.
Prohibiting S T R condos. Okay, can I put a check on that? No, what we're doing today is talking direction.
Exactly.
Next one is if intent is to incentivize more long-term rentals in R one, need to look at provisions relating to the use of A D Us, which is very restricted, which was mentioned earlier in the presentation. They also want to look at R two and R three zoning districts expansion. I mean.
Well, and and we've talked about this, like Clint mentioned it, but right now, you know, an A D U in an R one district basically only qualifies for the family to use as a guest house, which is defined as an occasional use. It's not very clear for an S T R. It doesn't allow for a long-term renter. So again, to try to bring back that neighborhood feel to R one, the idea would be to allow potentially long-term rentals. If so, what are the requirements of that going to be? Do they have to provide the onsite parking things to that?
Tim's daughter brought this up, but it wasn't, that you could have an S T R, but it can be a long-term rental, and as we have people who need helping, whatever we need to do for a long term.
Yeah.
And they should be very similar, right? I mean, I don't know what specific parking, if it's separate meters, you don't have to get involved in that. We could pay for the utilities or I don't know if there's any guidance, I mean.
Is a separate meter, meter possible?
So in R one, it's not allowed. And, and we do have, we'll talk about that later, but that's one of those cases where we want to keep it consistent across the board. So it, it shouldn't be specific to R one, R two. Or, or to S T Rs and non-S T Rs. Um. Generally, in those cases, we require sub-metering, if they want to, you know, divvy it up on their side, but as far as, from a city perspective, it's one meter for each lot in R one.
No, one other thing to consider with an A D U is the size of the A D U right now, the only thing it says about an A D U is that it cannot be larger than the main structure. So you could have a thirty-two hundred square foot main structure, and if the lot's large enough, you could have a. Thirty-one hundred, nine hundred and ninety-nine square foot accessory dwelling unit with four bedrooms and two baths. So right now, there's no limit really on the size of an A D U, so if we're really thinking an A D U is, you know, a one-bedroom apartment or a studio, then we might need to really drill down on that. Otherwise, we could have, I mean, potentially looking at the unintended consequences of, of the R one neighborhoods, and if they were all truly built out with A D Us in the backyard, you know, what, what would that look like? So I think size is something.
But is that, some of that covered Anna with, uh, the percentage of impervious cover in any particular lot? I mean, you couldn't have six thousand feet on a, what's that, a hundred-foot lot? You couldn't have six hundred feet of building and six thousand.
Right, but if you think about the, the original town law, it's one hundred by two hundred. That's quite a bit, so I, I just think it's something to consider is the size.
Okay, the point is, that needs to be looked at, if, if we want to incentivize. L T Rs rather than S T Rs in our world.
And, and there are ways to handle that, there's residential density limitations within the other zoning districts, so like in R two. Um, if you wanted to place a one-bedroom. Unit or facility, or a house on there, you would have to have a minimum three, of three thousand square feet of lot size. So that's how we could get around this concern of having two huge, uh, buildings on a property.
Well, I'd like to see us look at incentivizing more L T Rs in R one. Um. I think that's, that's an obvious. Okay. Partial solution to a big issue.
Relatively, A D Us in R one do, if they're S T Rs, they don't count against that whole seventy-five percent rule, does that need to be addressed? It, or here or there?
For those cup requirements?
Yeah.
Well, if, if we're trying to go away from the cup, I don't think it's an issue then.
Anything else on that issue? I don't want to rush you if you're not ready. Next, possibly create an S T R specific zone, we talked about that, or mentioned that earlier. Um, or limit S T Rs to certain zoning districts as part of the comp plan process. Uh, that's, we'll, we'll come up through the process. Uh, anybody have any strong feelings one way or the other today about that? Too much to know, to learn about that?
This is where you say you want to get rid of S T Rs in R one, R two, R three. I disagree, and I think we should have some in R one, R two. Um, so that's going to, it's going to be hard to do an overlay, let's say we do an overlay that corresponds with the whole district. Where is that? So that's going to take a lot of data.
You're opposed to what?
Of saying no more R one, R two, R three S T Rs. You said you want to get rid of them there, right? So I just think with any kind of overlay, we have to be looking at what, where the zones are.
If I could wave a wand and do whatever I wanted, I would go back to be the. People operate in, in, in R one, R two, or three, which is what we did in twenty thirteen. And the, the idea was that people couldn't afford a mortgage unless they went, or they might couldn't afford a mortgage if they went into that business. Which is a high price to pay, but some people wanted to do that. Um, now we've, we've got the, the reality we are, I'm not against S T Rs well-operated. I do wonder where the line is to say, well, it's working against one of our major objectives. How do we address this? So no, I wouldn't say that it's, it's accurate to characterize my view as, I don't want any in R one, R two, R three. It's been too beneficial for our economy through the years, operated well.
Thank you for that.
You are.
I, could, could this mean that we want to try to create a new zoning district in. Property that is not developed right now? If you're looking at, if you're looking at the comp plan and you look at the map, you can look at a friendship plan or someplace else where there's nothing. And you want to say, all right, put it right there.
Oak Haven and Meadow River. My.
You understand my point, if, if that's, if that's trying to get to, I mean, because Emily's right. You know, we could start overlaying, 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 where we're also confused, you know, what. But if you have new property, did you want to try to put them there? Then maybe you can do that.
And, and I think that's why that's part of that comp plan discussion.
I understand.
Yeah, so that's maybe a few months down the road.
But on the other hand, is that not why it's being addressed in the comp plan to begin with? To try to create a new building, a new property that you don't develop? Or are you trying to encourage another overlay?
And are we, is, are we differentiating between an R two subdivision, established R two subdivision, and R two property? Emily lives in an R two subdivision, South Heights is an R two subdivision. The land of Friendship Lane is R two.
Right, and will be developed differently, and I think one thing, it's almost the opposite of what you're saying, Tim, is a similar issue, but. Uh, available property that wants to come into the city, maybe be annexed or change their current zoning to R two. And maybe they want to do apartments, but right now by right, if they go to R two, they're allowed, they could divide, uh, you know, twenty acres into how many lots? So I, I don't know if we need a new zoning category that's similar to R two that just strictly doesn't allow unoccupied. Um, because right now, when I'm being asked to make a zoning determination for R two, I have to consider that every lot could be an unoccupied S T R. If it is an empty lot on Friendship, ten acres, twenty acres, so. I do think we need to think about, as we annex or as we change zoning, um, if we're trying to get to affordable housing, if we're trying to get to more apartments or denser neighborhoods. Do we want S T Rs there, or do we want them concentrated in the downtown area?
Well, you, you first brought up the concept to me. What do you have in mind? Were you talking about? Zones that already exist and changing the character of them through, through a zoning, like. Um, this area here is where we want to encourage S T Rs. So you should buy property in these areas, there are already a bunch of them there on what?
Yeah, I mean, we still have R one, R two, you know, on, on the way up, but then have an overlay where it's geographic. And shows this is where we want it to be, and I just think we have disagreements all over. Of, do we want our guests to be able to walk to Main Street, or do we want them out on the edge of town?
Are you a focused, intentional approach to where we want us to go?
And encourage that, and make it right for them in this area, but then everywhere else, you're going to have to work harder to get it.
And you have mentioned the old historic district, because we expanded a historic district, what, three years ago, four years ago? Uh, which takes up a lot of. A lot of houses, a lot of borrowed money.
I was, I was just looking to get something we already have an overlay for, to get an idea of number of parts of lands there, and so the. Stand-in with historic is pretty big, goes up to what, North Street or something, it goes to Waymore.
Yeah.
Where that, that little one was a little bit closer to town.
Yeah, so the answer to Tim's question, I think today is both. Is the consideration both, I mean.
Yeah.
Obviously new development, whenever that's going to happen, all right. Thank you for that, um, anything else on that? All right, number twenty-three, possibly create an S T R, oh, we did that, that's one. Um, specific regs, the number twenty-four, specific regs should be removed from zoning ordinance as was done in twenty eighteen, reference to zoning provisions as needed.
So this is just a general comment again, in twenty eighteen, it was a, a standalone ordinance specific to S T R uses. In twenty twenty-two, there were, we, we call it an S T R ordinance, but there are a lot of changes made to the overall zoning ordinance. So we're, we're talking about potential changes to the zoning ordinance again, which is fine, but in the future, if we're. Continuing to make minor tweaks, the idea would be to have those standalone requirements for S T Rs as a standalone ordinance. That makes the process a lot simpler for staff, we don't have to send out the six thousand notices. Um, which takes up a lot of time, so again, just a general comment, I don't think with the, the amount of changes we're talking about today, we'll have to go through the full process, but. In the future, something to keep in mind.
Comments on that specific?
Can that be addressed during the comp plan? To come up with a, an S T R ordinance that.
I think so, half's going to put together, you know, some action items to implement the comp plan, so we can definitely include that in the discussion.
I, I would love to see it, I think it'd make everybody's life a lot simpler. And in my mind, we should have gone that direction to begin with, but we didn't, and we've got what we've got, so. Um, I'd love to see an S T R ordinance.
Well, currently, uh, essentially, I think that section, I remember thinking is five point four zero, which is additional requirement for short-term rental use, and that very specific section is by pages. But you have to get all, a hundred and fourteen pages of the total document to get to that. So if we pull just that section out and make that a standalone ordinance, and make tweaks to that versus the entire zoning code. That's great, and I think it might have been necessary, if I'm wrong, to pull in since there were full zoning changes, like marking and things like that. But even if you could just reference, like, quiet hours as applicable to everyone, and use reference that other part.
Like Mike doesn't know.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's probably constant duty in both ways. The pro, keeping it in the zoning ordinance, parts have to change. And that's good, because it gives stability, once this issue is taken down and resolved. Then it's not going to be witch song with every administration coming in, you just take the vote. No, it's going to take a zoning, and we know the penalties involved, and they're great to coming at it from that direction. It, it makes it less flexible, but we spent a lot of time on this, if you, you know, we, we, we're sort of leading the industry, if you will. And I think we're, we're way down the road, they tightened us down now. We shouldn't be having a lot of myths and changes, and again, I think it's just good to give stability, folks, the S T R industry. To, to staff or what, to make it difficult to change, so it's going to, going to be there for a extended period.
I'd like to get, Rachel, are you still there? Do you have an input on this discussion regarding zoning? Making these things a part of the ordinance, zoning ordinance?
Absolutely, I typically advise cities to put the bulk of their short-term rental ordinance in their general ordinances, not in their zoning ordinance. We do include zoning provisions as needed, of course, because we have to tailor the short-term rental ordinance to whatever zoning districts we're going to permit it in. So I think those provisions in particular are of more concern for property owners, and that goes to the concern of stability going forward. Uh, because, you know, you can't just casually change the zoning designations that accompany the short-term rental ordinance. But when it comes to kind of the more. Small time changes, if we need to adjust the permitting process or the regulations that apply. Um, the, putting the bulk of the ordinance in your general ordinances gives staff a little more flexibility. With adjusting that as needed, because, you know, the longer this program is administered. Things may come to light that, that may need adjusting, so it helps the ordinance be a little more adaptable.
Good, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it, um, I'm sensitive about diminishing returns as we've been here for a couple of hours. Um, really great discussion, I'd like to recommend that we're obviously going to be needing to meet again. I'd like to recommend that for this morning, it, it is okay, please speak up if it's not, that, um. Um, as I look at the page that we've been on, parking, local contact and reporting, is something that doesn't feel as urgent to discuss today, but. Um. Uh, in, in the interest of time, not because it's not important. Um, but if we might put focus on the next few minutes to, to wrap up today. With, um. Any pertinent comments, opinions, uh, perspectives that you have regarding permitting, that's number seven. And number ten, transfers. Number seven, um, stick with one-year permit, we may want to revise fee structure, that was a task force proposal. The, um, so you see the staff comments there? Anyone?
I, I could see with the two-year permit, certainly from a point. Sam, what else would help alleviate some of the backlog we're having? Two-year, I think you can still. Uh, coordinate, and certainly if you get complaints, you know they're not operating.
So. And the city reserves the right to inspect.
Right.
And, and keep them in the ten-day permit. Yeah, keep in the ten-day permit, maybe go to a two-year permit.
I want, I want to talk about the ten days from the, all real estate type town in the audience. In my view, should, should the notifications that the property that somebody is buying is an S T R be included in the closing documents? So those people know that they have ten days to get that application done. Because everything else that you do on that purchase, one way or the other. Happens with closing, it's all the closing, closing, and if, if you miss it, and if your, your real estate agent doesn't tell you. Which I think you should put a hump on the real estate agent about, about clients that. Then, uh, you know, in ten days, it's just not enough time.
Well, I think there's been, well, I forgot, I was not real clear, but I'm familiar with this requirement, and then.
But that's not. I mean, they can't use them as excuses. I don't think, I don't think they can either, I mean. I don't know, ten days may not be enough, but, but still, the disclosure needs to be made, it's time to close them on the property.
It should be part of the checklist.
Absolutely, and that has.
You're going to get them to volunteer there, right?
Get who to volunteer, the real, real pay. I don't know, I think, I think he's got to make a deal with the property company that says they're able to close down, it could be a good one, too. Should catch it off.
Hence, if you never get paid, there's law, there's quite a deal, not. We're able to transfer. Yeah, we actually deny, agree. Applications for the failure to transfer. But then we never.
The problem is, I don't know, there's a lot of people that don't make, uh, they're looking for a permit. So your locals are going to be following, and now you do that, I don't know, that's because my permit number, that's my permit, yes. But still, if you're not a part of the local, unless you have a, that's in there, and so, you know, it's only going to be five years. So the Alex Hunter, whoever the problem is.
That should be a possible local people, isn't it?
What?
Um, it says, you know, the buyer's going to be paying for it, or people are not going to hire. And it's not a part of the business to pass on a permit, um, well, you know what I'm saying, it's the responsibility of the buyer. And the buyer, because if the buyer's not local, what do you do? And as low as we do, kind of, I mean, you can't, but it's not the difference, you know, like, the closing documents, you do for a permit, so you have. Um, if it's not a, no, a permit, you can sell off any of them. So I don't understand, can we overhand for that, or can I apply?
Well, here's, here's the issue that I would. That if you're a seller, you're selling, you're selling the S T R, you're getting a premium department, correct? Based upon, based upon the sale prices today, if you're a seller, it seems to me. That the seller would want to make sure that the buyer understands the reason he she is. Paying a premium price for this property is because there's a permanent patch, and, and you have ten days to transfer that property.
Well, generally, like, I already do, so, and I've, I've been talking that, that I just do. I mean, sort of, in terms of provisions, that it is, um, contingent on getting a permit from the city or broker. Um, ten days is not enough, though, I'd play that much. But generally, that information is put through an auction period, now, if someone isn't allowed to get that permit in time.
Um, it's different.
But timing has everything complicated, but thirty days would be, twenty, thirty days would be more uphill, especially if you have a weekend. So it's not really quick, because a lot of art, and ten days is two hundred days, not ten more days.
And it is ten business days in the code. Uh, I will say, ten days seem short, I understand, but, um, from a staff perspective, having updated local contact information is the key. That's why it's a pretty quick turnaround, uh, both from a public safety perspective, and then also if there are issues. If we're calling somebody to say that, you know, I sold the property, you know, okay, we don't know who to contact then if there is an issue.
And how does that work if y'all, if we're having like a nine.
And how does that work if y'all, if we have like a nine month ish backlog? I mean, are you checking now? You don't know if something is sold and if it's ten days, you know, are you looking back like, oh, back in August? It was ten days, but you're operating a permit. Like, how does that work for y'all?
So so it's actually worked one of two ways. One, we catch it through the review process. We reach out to the owner saying, hey, we've got your application. We want to process it. They go, I sold that property and never received contact. And so we don't know who now owns the property. Um, so then we can identify contact information. We go back and reach out to the owner. But in all those experiences, we haven't been able to make contact with the owner. We just survived the application because we don't know who to give it to. Um, the other example would be when we do do a review, we find that a new application has been submitted, perhaps within the ten day requirement. And so then we're just merging those two records essentially saying, okay, this new owner submitted an application. It's taking place of this pending application. We combine the two records. Um, but all transfers must be completed with a ten business days. We work with the new owner to get an inspection, make sure the property remains compliant, so they're able to take over. That property, but we do verify all the local contact information as part of that. And in an instance where we have a complaint on a property, we reach out to a local contact. And the property is sold or that's no longer the same individual, maybe they switch management companies and notice a violation issue. And you said three transfers have been denied since April first. And so that, and that's all permit. I mean, that's right, that just what y'all would be. Like up until July twenty two.
Does that make sense? I'm sorry, I'm not. I'm sorry, you said that y'all denied three transfers. Did though, because there, are y'all allowing other transfers? Or is that just within the April of July?
We're allowing other transfers. We we do quite a few, actually. That's pretty busy. Um, but of the three specifics that we denied, if I remember correctly, one or two of them we denied because we couldn't contact the owner. We didn't know who now owns that property. And so we were doing a previous application that had been submitted by the prior owner. And when contacted, they said they no longer own the property. And are those operating as S T Rs like we're all having them cease business? We provide communication, we consider cease operation immediately and a notice of violation issue if they're found to be operating. Um, I think one is just they weren't the property truly had sold and the family was using it as a reference.
Who do you send the violation to if you don't know who owns it?
I'm sorry?
Who do you send the violation to?
It goes to the property owner.
If you don't know who the property owner is.
So there's some either a certified letter or.
Okay.
Except a certified letter for the property state.
Okay.
Danic Smith?
So that interactive map would be huge for reading for the cloud. If you know what's active, what's permitted, um, and and then the ten days. The problem with the ten days that I've seen as a Realtor is most people shut the meeting down to a little re-walk. And they, they, it's been thirty eight days without coming up. So that's just something for y'all to think about, but I think that interactive map for Realtors. For the community, including residents, would be huge. And then we can see what property you're permitted active.
Thank you. Janelle?
Um, just thinking to the, the real estate authority, I'm telling. Um, just to give you a little bit of background, I love to say in terms of your board of Realtors, about seven and a half years. And one of the things that I did there was I did it one time working. And when we used to do, uh, periodically, is we would review our forms with, uh, T A R, Texas Association of Realtors. Um, they currently work. Uh, last time, it was like a year ago, they still have common work that included a lot of these things that the seller has to disclose. The seller's disclosure, um, for anybody talking about there. And so my, considering that in person, we cannot be the only city that is experiencing these issues, we thought of the grandest. That has been a lot of different areas of experience we were into. Our board, I think it would be worthwhile to suggest to our local board, maybe work with T A R. Um, in seeing, you know, if there is something that they can do to at least have a check off or something on that. They identify, they use that property by showing that they use it as an S D R, but have a current permit. You know, that's what we're making. So, um, just disclosing that, I think, would probably make a huge difference. They should be on this ratio, you know, and if the buyer's responsibility to inform and comply. If the document is submitted from being left under review, the point of view is we would be moving with the need of our eyes and compliance.
All right, so that's in the hop. Just for my, so I had to step out. Is the issue the number of days or the amount of work it takes to renew? I mean, to transfer?
Number of days.
Okay, that's that's perceived as not quite enough and we got too many violators to.
No, it's just the dog.
It seems possible. Let's one second. It it creates people getting letters like we got this week. All right, so what about?
Just a little bit of the background on that. I think the the conversation was, well, you've got to, you've got to switch your utilities over too, right? I mean, when you purchase a property, you've got some responsibilities on transferring, right?
Right.
And so that was one thing, when you're coming to City Hall to transfer your utilities, go on upstairs and transfer that permit. Um, I mean, it is education. All of this has been and will continue to be education. From the city out to the realtors, out to the title companies, out to the homeowners. Um, so we can always do more on that side. Um, but I think the ten days, again, it's 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 life safety because we don't know what we don't know. Um, we have no way of knowing if a property sold. Um, so ten days, thirty days, we'll do what you tell us, but I I do think, or a lot of other cities don't do it at all. So there may not be any, you know, from the Board of Realtors across the state because other cities don't allow transfers. That's it.
Okay, um, well, that, well, let's just continue about the transferability then. What is, what are your high level thoughts about? Transferability of these permits generally, ten days or whatever? And what, um, um. Yeah, what are we trying to talk?
You know, you go to the.
We had, we had the discussion when we were talking about the, the ordinance from Bobby was. Okay, you got ten days to do it. If not, it's gone. And it was a way to reduce the number of S D Rs. That was the discussion back in February, March, July of here.
But other than that, the transferability remains perpetual.
He's talking about from one owner to the next is what he's talking about.
Right, then what I'm saying is the reason for the ten days was kind of a uh, way to say no more S D R. Now, I don't, I think of the transferability from one owner to another. I believe the last council believed that there was, okay, you bought a piece of property, you showed the right to transfer to move over. And now the question is just how many days you have that right to transfer.
Could you say ten days is okay?
I don't know, you know, in today's, I don't know what, you know, in the real estate market. Uh, you've got, I would look at it as, okay, what a buyer wants to do is sell their property. And so is a buyer really interested in making sure, no, excuse me. What a seller wants to do is sell their property and is the seller that interested in making sure that the buyer. Has a property, if he's got a check that he can put in the bank.
I don't think so. On days, they're out of there. You're done.
I don't like using a ten day as a way to lower the number. Okay. To catch people, oh, you lost, you didn't get your ten days, you're out of business. I think that there ought to be a bigger step from the council and B Z to here's where we're going with this. We honor those people who are doing their work well, et cetera. Um, but we do have an a compelling interest in drawing back properties that solves a larger objective, which is our housing. I understand it's a whole nother thing and it's not a direct path from that to create a good housing. I'm just saying that to move forward on that objective seems to me to make sense. And the ten days, you know, she recommended thirty, if somebody is really intent on doing it and that they're playing by the rules that we've established. I don't know what we do unless you change the rule. The rule is you get one time to transfer and that's it. Because our compelling interest is to reduce the number of S T Rs unoccupied specifically in R one, R two, if we can say that. Um, or, um, you can't transfer them anymore after June first, nineteen twenty three. If you, any new permit is non-transferable, period. That's, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, so, but that's, that is a, that's a separate discussion from number ten. Okay, so the issue, the issue here is, or is, is ten days. Is saying you've only got ten days to transfer a permit, is that enough time, given the situation in the real estate industry?
In my opinion about that, it's what, what maximizes the efficiency of staff and what has to happen from the city is transfer that.
Could be that our ten, that that ten days is not enough time for.
Right, for shelter.
Because that's our interest, right?
How long do you allow transfer utilities?
You don't have to, right? You can, what you can, your property could sit there with no utility hook up at all.
It's occupied. We, if it's occupied, we're in pursuit of it.
Right, but if I, if I buy a piece of property and then I never, I.
Could I, could I make another point about this and why? It's very important for the real estate community to be involved in this transfer issue. The buyer of the property that's been used as a short term rental is responsible for the previous buyer's hotel tax. They can be sued by the city and the state if it's unpaid or delinquent. Unless they've obtained a certificate of paid occupancy taxes. That's the kind of thing that should happen. And we're also protecting our buyers of S T Rs in this community by requiring them to go through their procedures we've established to transfer. Because a lot of people don't know, I didn't check to see if the other people paid property tax, well, I mean, hotel tax, well, too bad, you owe it now. And and we can't collect from them and we can't, you can't do that in ten days, can you, right? No, you get the certificate when you buy the property. Uh, otherwise you're at risk for anything they haven't paid. And that's the law in Texas.
The federal right to real estate taxes.
They don't prorate property taxes. If you don't get that certificate, if you're a buyer. You owe a hundred percent of what the guy, the seller didn't pay. And that's, that's just the way it is. It's that way for anyone who has a.
So that would be four ten that are a shorter time. In other words, that, I understand.
Recommendation. It it doesn't matter how long we get the transfer, but people need to know that they're at risk for delinquent hotel tax from their seller.
Has we run into that problem much or at all?
Okay.
I have a question about the ten day. Would the ten day be an allocation for the whole process to be complete and start planning?
So if I may, we do transfers in real time. That's not part of these pending applications that you see. When a property owner reaches out to staff and says, hey, I have purchased this property, it starts the transfer process immediately. We work with them to obtain their contact information, their local contact information, and we schedule inspection. And today, I think we're somewhere in the ballpark of two hundred transfers roughly. Um, so we do those in real time. Only three have been denied thus far for this issue. Now, as we're reviewing pending applications, if we find issues of ownership change, that'll add to that number. But and we do transfers in real time.
When you do transfers in real time, do you look at if property taxes are paid, I mean, hot taxes are paid?
We look for violations and other information. Um, I'm, I can't think of an instance where we ever had outstanding hot. The issue that we have is often when properties transition from one ownership to another, they're in the middle of a quarter. So we won't know if they've remitted hot or if that previous owner has plans on remitting hot because they sold the property in the middle of the quarter. So technically, they're still responsible for that previous quarter, but the deadline hasn't come yet.
Yes, and so that's why I think it's sometimes it is negotiated in the sale, we're gonna take over. You know, the ownership of the property, then you pay all the taxes going forward for hotel. And other times in the same year, we're split it, or one pays for the fourth and number quarter, but they, uh, have ownership and then the other pays for the rest of the part.
So what's the preponderance of the ten days as opposed to something else?
I don't like it as a gotcha way. I don't like it to be construed that way. I think if we have a robust, you know, interactive map, and so it's about who the local contacted and making sure that, I think that's a more compelling argument to have it done as quickly as possible. And I'm not a real estate expert. I've bought and sold houses, but I, I think much as we could tie it to closing.
This ten day restriction?
No, twenty two.
And I think it's important to note also that this transferability is only required for those non-conforming properties. Any property that's, the eleven new properties that have issued, the eleven new short term rental permits have been issued, they're permitted by right. They wouldn't have to transfer that permit. They can just apply for their own and get their own permit. So this is really only for those non-conforming properties.
All right, council commission, where would you like to go next? The, um, the only other thing on the agenda is to discuss next step regarding proposed ordinance amendments. Um, I think it appeals to me and all what we've done is pinpoint the ones that are going to require more discussion. And, um. Deliberation, am I correct in that assessment? Within one business?
One thing we did discuss, and I hope it's not too granular, but trash, I see so many of the violations are trash related. And I was wondering how that, what was set up in twenty twenty two for date occupancy, you need a ninety fifty gallons of trash cans. Is that working well? Do we need to revisit that?
It's working well. Um. They, there, that's one of those that where does, should it apply equally to everyone? I mean, we don't have that requirement of other people, so. Uh, that's probably a question that needs to be answered, but overall, those changes are working well. And it, that actually ties back to that maximum occupancy. If we're gonna limit it at eight, maybe we don't need the additional trash can.
So all these trash violations that are reported in the code enforcement data are those trash, trash cans that are overflowing or are just?
Uh, it's a combination of overflowing and then trash cans that are left out or put out too early.
I'll make one comment about overflowing trash cans. Most families aren't eating a lot of takeout. And I think a lot of, a lot of trash violations are, you know, takeout containers. You know, you, you have, you have more trash going into a, into your trash can. If you're, if you're eating out and you're bringing it back than you do if you're a normal man.
And so what?
So my, my feeling is that if you are, that, uh, you know, in an S P R situation. If you have a, if you have over, over six, you probably would need a second, uh, a second container. Because you're not cooking.
Okay. Well, I see some photos of violators.
Can we just stipulate in the ordinance? At six or more, you get two cans.
Yeah.
More than seven. I mean, that, that's what it is.
That, no, Emily, your question was.
I might need three.
If it's working well, because I think it seems like there's a lot of trash violations. I don't know if they're overstepping or.
It is helped with the overstepping. I, I think a lot of those cases we're seeing here recently are related to, they're, they're putting about, you know, three days in advance. And and that is.
They've probably been instructed to. All right, um, I wanted to draw to a close. Are there any further comments, questions, clarification, suggestions, recommendations about anything we've talked about? Before, before we move on to what's next?
I have a question. Um, number twenty four, that we agree on.
I have a question on number twenty four that we agree on. S T R seeing around the ordinance.
I think that'll come. I thought we would, they, it'd come to the comp plan. It's probably going to require unified development code, some major changes to the zoning code.
Okay, good, thank you.
A question on occupancy, just thinking through it. John, you were the last thirty. Two hundred.
I like the target. Yeah, I did too. I just think it's simple. It's.
Maybe a square authority max. And you come up with a max, right?
Come up with a max based on foot, square foot, and that allows you. That allows you to go up higher than eight. Yeah, I'd say I've, I've taken more changes for the next year. I think that you're going to keep these crowds, huh?
I think that, that doing the changes, the person, you, a team in under or a team, you actually match what they're doing. How they're practicing, by open the. They're, they're making a payment for their site and that's where the challenge is.
Yeah, it just gets into that, how do we?
Yeah.
How do we do that?
The next way to do it is with the advertising. And for monitoring the advertising, you won't have that many instances in that area.
As long as we're clear on that. We came up, there's no way. Well, is there one or the other that the, the, she and Zee considers to be more amenable to your work on a month, month basis? If you're looking at applications and. Well, I think, I think that if you, if you put the hump on somebody else, like fire code, it's true, they.
Right.
But you keep the language in there lesser, and then you make the applicant say, with this number of bedrooms, I can have this, this number of people. With the fire code, I can have this number of people, and he says, okay, according to your application, you can use fire.
Would you wouldn't have to say, which is, if it says lesser. And it would fall to the end. So occupancy, would that also affect our parking issues? And if we're already having to give a bad as well.
Parking issue, yeah.
Yes.
Parking's for bedroom. Parking's for bedroom. So why should you? For bedroom, in most cases, other than facilities. And the facility.
And what if we, who's. Probably, possibly be based on the, like, what we were talking about in North Carolina. I mean.
Is it ea, would it be easier if we're consistent throughout the ordinance? If it's, if it's park, if it's bedroom for parking, then occupancy should be better.
Shouldn't be square footage of the house. I mean, it's just seems kind of arbitrary to do it based on bedroom.
Where they're sleeping. And so when you do invite this, by total square footage, you could have small bedrooms and very large living areas, and that is definitely where we're seeing nooks become. Bunk beds, I'm quite literally, and that to the eighteen and under. Yeah, I mean, it could be, it could be a house full of seventeen year old boys that aren't counted in that.
I've gotten a ring to think about in the first eight years, so in the whole, I mean, to do it.
Right, there's egress issues, but if it's just a bed or a room, it's not a bedroom, it's an office and it has a window, and they're just stuffing it in there because. They have the space. They don't have the number of bedrooms, but they have physical space. We can do it.
So there is unique cases all the time, so I, I mean, that's where maybe the lesser of the two makes sense. If you're trying to limit the overall occupancy, that might be the way to go. But, but I guess the question would be, you know, are we looking at that max occupancy? That's the other number that we need to probably discuss.
Anything else?
Did we decide on that occupancy? Down the road.
Down the road.
Okay.
It'll be hard on me. So, Mike, just close, what I'm hearing, those of you speaking, is that what you'd like to consider is the lesser to this or that with a maximum of that.
Right. Well, and when I say max occupancy, let's throw out the example of a forty five hundred square foot house that has twelve bedrooms. You know, and, and so you could sleep up to twenty six according to the calculations. Are y'all going to set an overall maximum?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. That's all, yeah.
And that doesn't impact a lot of S T Rs, does it?
Why, yeah, why do you want a hotel?
It's in R one.
It's not.
It's like worst case scenario. Yeah.
Did we answer the number seven, the permit may need two years? I mean, wouldn't that just be, if that's a staff workload reduction, could we do an annual permit of the same cost, but you're just not expecting every year, expecting the other year? I think that would be a wonderful solution, but I do think that would help with staff's time being able to process these, knowing that if, if you choose to keep transfers, transfers would require an inspection and updating contact information. Violations would require an inspection, so we'd still be looking at the properties that need to be looked at. But if you have a good operator that's maintained the same ownership and contact information, there'd be no need for inspection. And then be able to operate for two years without interruption.
Then, okay, you're okay, so your permit, you could, you could renew it and the money, and your renewal would still come in into that budget. So instead of me paying for two years of a permit that goes into this budget year, and then the next year, I'm operating without paying the city any.
It's a one year renewal with a two year inspection.
Right. Okay, and so the city would still be getting their work to go home in their annual renewal other year.
So we're just removing the inspection.
Right, so we're gonna.
So, so my apologies, I recommend a ten year permit renewal. And then the inspection only being, currently inspections are only required if there's a change in ownership, if there's a building, if there's a change to the property, or if there's been complaints. The only time inspections are required.
That's a factor. Well, if it's a two year renewal, if that's what, you know, two, in other words, you're cutting the renewal workload in half. Then there would be a financial factor.
Right.
Could you not have had to beginning, have to seven year, I mean, could we?
Half would be, would be due at, at the renewal day. And that sounds like we're getting into not making.
Yeah, I, I think we can deal with the budget implications, so don't, let's take that as a discussion.
Okay.
It's actually impacting the budget.
Again, we, we can work around that. If we know that's the plan, we'll deal with that.
It would, what I'm hearing is, I'm hearing is that it would impact the budget, but it may not be another factor to not do.
After the first round or two, it's going to level out and be able to plan.
Yeah. That's why you could account for that. Get ready. All right, all right, I'm sensitive about the time, but I, I said I want to redeem it and make sure everybody's got. They left to do the event. What would you like to do from here? Do you want to go ahead and schedule or wait until we get feedback from everybody else regularly? I know y'all, I mean, coming out of labor, but my view is that we ought to continue the process until we get it done as well, right? And not try to meet a particular deadline. Because this is, this is great discussion to me. This is really very helpful. What'd you say again?
That's it. We just have to take as long as it takes.
Right. Yeah, without put dragging, but, but, so. Well, our goal is to help, not only all, but the rest of the community.
I guess what would be helpful for y'all for the next discussion, you know, something like this where we can discuss the proposed changes that came out of today? And then continue that discussion next time?
I'll be happy to follow up with you on what I consider to be. The issues, and then you can filter it out and see what they think.
Okay, and if you would be so kind as to clearly answer all the questions we have from the different points, so we have that information for making future decisions. Send you a lot of data.
Fighting data, court documents.
We have that.
Anything else? I think, would it work for y'all to just to put out a paper and, and here's some options? Does that work best for y'all? Because I'm. We have, we have the data, we're ready to present whether it's when you, when you. I'd like to do it within the next two to three weeks. I can say, give you the. Does it give you the time, three weeks?
Yeah, it shouldn't take too long, or about two weeks.
About two. So go hear from us. Will that work? Max, thank you. Rachel, thank you. Did we leave anything burning? I'll put the motion. Motion, second, City Council, we should adjourn, I'll never say, ah, we're both, we're adjourned. Thank you all.